Call to order, the school committee meeting of September 12th, 2024 will rise for the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, for our consent agenda, we have the minutes of August 20th of 2024. The committee wants to take a moment to review those. Is there any discussion?
From August 20th, 2024 is presented in the packet.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Oh, someone's been, the door's locked.
I'll get it.
Somebody kicked a stone out of the way. Wasn't me.
Okay, all right. So for school committee meetings, we're wanting people to enter through the side door rather than the front door of the central office building. So for future reference, it'll be that side door. I will have that noted on the agenda for next time, too, so when people pull up the agenda.
There was a stone there.
We'll have a reference to that.
I took it out, just because.
Is that how it disappeared?
Correct. All right. We have a motion and a second. Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Mr. Moskovich?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Cormier?
Yes.
And I vote yes, and those are approved. All right, we're going.
That one's locked, too. I can't get out.
We can't even get out.
No, we have to go out through the side door.
Okay, we're going to take just a brief recess. If there's no objection?
No objection.
Okay.
Are we strained out?
She couldn't get down. He was waiting at the front door because I had her fly over. It was rolling. It's okay.
Well, wait till they come back. We took a brief recess. We've got to wait for our tech to come back.
We're good.
What could we do if this was located?
Okay, we are returning from our brief recess. All right, so we're moving back in onto our agenda communications. We have our student representatives back with us. This is very exciting. First time having them back with us for the new school year. I will point out, too, one of the things that I had reached out to the student representatives about, it's one of the things the committee had discussed, was we love hearing all the exciting things that are going on with the high school and all the events. And we have invited them, at least one of them, each meeting, and they can rotate it however they'd like, to stay and be a part of the discussions going forward, although they are a non-voting member. We do love to hear their voices and want them to be an active part of the discussions at the school committee meetings. So we're looking forward to that as well. So we'll turn the time over for you, for your reports at this, for the time being.
Yeah.
Okay. Hi, I'm Ally. I'm the newbie, and I'm really grateful to be here and to help voice the opinions of students. Oh, sorry, I didn't know what was going next. So, we had a lot of sports games today. We had freshman boys' football at Drakeitt, junior varsity boys' soccer versus Central Catholic, junior varsity girls' soccer versus Central Catholic, varsity boys' soccer versus Central Catholic, and varsity girls' soccer versus Central Catholic.
So, we started the first day off with freshman orientation. We funneled them in, gave them their schedules, we had the speech, and then we sent them to advisory. There, we had the student ambassadors help them. So the student ambassadors, every year, on the first day, they have this program where you can come, volunteer as a student ambassador, help the freshmen along at the advisory. They gave sort of like an introduction to the school, to the freshmen. And then we had a mock schedule for all of them. So they ran through the mock schedule, and student ambassadors were stationed throughout the hallways to help facilitate the traffic and all of the discourse when it came to finding their classes. And also, clubs are starting up this year. The first meetings for new and old clubs have already begun. And the club fair will be coming up around October to help spread club awareness once they're established, right? And the NOS open house was on the 10th from 6:00 to 8:30 p.m. And it was a great way for the parents to see their teachers, and some students could have also went, seen their teachers. It's a fun thing to do. I did that freshman year, and yeah, there we go.
Also today, the, sorry, NAMM has their open house next Thursday, which is also their picture day. Kindergarteners had their first day of school last Thursday, or sorry, last Tuesday. The Drama Guild has been holding auditions for Cinderella, which is the musical for this year. Callbacks were today. And seniors have been meeting with their guidance counselors to talk about the college application process, got a college checklist, and also their transcripts.
So, on the first day of school, Student Council, we welcomed all students back with a sticky note wall. So basically, we had four different walls, and it would write, like, each wall would write the year of graduation. So, an example is like, one of the walls said 2025. We spilt it out in sticky notes, and every single sticky note had a student in that grade's name on it. And so, we worked on that. And another thing is, a lot of students have felt unrest at the high school because there's been a lot of recent news media about just school shootings all over the country. And with rumors of a stricter cellphone policy, students are frightened about their safety. And I know this is like a thing that you guys want to talk about, so we do have more things to talk about if you ask.
Were you joining the concern about safety with the cellphone, or they just happened to come one after the other?
They are joined. A lot of students feel a little concerned about the possibility of having cellphones taken and not, in case of an emergency, not being able to contact, like, family members.
Do we want to add some additional comments and questions?
I will say that Mrs. Ando and I were at the high school on the first day, and some of the freshmen were asking us for some help, and we were very grateful that you were all there because we were able to direct them to you. But it was really nice to see upperclassmen there, supporting the freshmen, and they did a great job getting there. And we did get to see your 2025 wall with everybody's name on it, too.
And if, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe Dr. Holman is working on a cellphone policy, and I'm sure your voices will be taken into consideration as that comes into play.
She is. So she's been meeting with faculty to get some faculty opinions about what's the things that are working well with cellphones and things that aren't. And then, if she hasn't already, I know one of her next plans is to go to Student Council and to ask you some of the same things.
I'm curious if the concerns are, like, that you wouldn't have them in an emergency with a system where, you know, you stick them in the basket on the way into class, that probably address that, right?
Yeah, so one of the solutions that a few students have come up with is, so, a school, Drakeitt, they have a policy where in every single teacher's classroom, they have a cellphone pocket, so every student puts their pocket in, I mean, they put their cellphone in the pocket. And it's up there for the whole class, and then they can grab it at the end of class. But it's a good, they, I talked to the president of Student Council at Drake about it because they, I mean, they're not happy about it, but it's a better thing than just taking them away because students can visually, like, see their phones there, and if there is an emergency, they can just grab it and, like, go, you know?
That strikes me as probably a good way, or at least one potential thing to consider, right? A good way to go. Okay? I was curious about that. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. We do appreciate all these wonderful updates. And of course, I don't know, you've discussed amongst yourselves, if somebody would like to stay, we would love that, and to hear your voices as part of that. And/or all of you are always welcome.
I believe at least three of us are saying.
Okay, wonderful. We appreciate that. Okay. All right, we are going to move on to public comment. Is there any public comment? Okay. All right. Do we have any recognitions?
We do. Mrs. Ando, do you have a picture there? There we go. We would like to start by recognizing Kevin Foster. Kevin is a custodian at North Andover Middle School. On Friday, he was just making his regular rounds in the cafeteria, getting ready to clean up some of the barrels, take care of some of the trash. It was around 11:30, and he heard someone saying, "Help, help, the student is choking." And 11-year-old Trevor Scriber was choking. He was about 15 feet away from Kevin Foster. Kevin went into action. He has gone through the CPR training. He performed the Heimlich maneuver and was able to save his life. So Kevin was, and Trevor were, I'm trying to think of the word, when the newspaper comes in, oh, interviewed. Late at night. I'm playing a card game here. They were interviewed by the Tribune. This was in today's Tribune. Really proud. We're so grateful for Kevin being there at the right time, for students doing the right thing, calling for help for their friend, and for our nurses in North Andover and our EMTs in North Andover who have so graciously helped train us in CPR. Having more staff trained in CPR really shows how you can save a life. So, that's a picture of Kevin and Trevor. All things ended well. And then, I also just want to recognize North Andover Public Schools and all the employees that work here for a successful staff, you know, school opening. There are always little glitches, and I know some glitches seem a little bit bigger than others. We've had a few issues with some of our busing that we are working out. But all in all, everybody, we've had a relatively smooth opening. And people who sometimes don't get a lot of credit but really are so instrumental in our opening are people like who work in food services, who made sure all of our cafeterias were up and running. On opening day, our food services provided some breakfast to all of our staff. Our custodians who worked tirelessly to get our schools ready and were there for those first two days when teachers came back, getting everything, moving into classrooms. Our crossing guards who came out and who are here and making sure our students get safe. What I love about central office is it's so close to so many areas that I get to walk to so many schools, and I'm really grateful that the crossing guard's there to help me, especially when I'm trying to navigate over to middle school. All of the office staff in all of the schools, we've had a few changes. The beginning of the year can be really hectic, but just so grateful. Central office staff, I want everyone to know that people are working really hard here, trying to, you know, get things moving along. We have wonderful school nurses. Our nurses were able to respond in that case and several other cases. Our teaching assistants, who have been supporting students and staff. Our teachers, obviously, who have been coming in. We had a few warm days in the beginning of the school year, and we were still waiting for some materials, but everybody's been wonderful service providers that are working with us. All of our administrators, but really grateful for all of our students. As I said, Mrs. Ando and I, and Greg Landry, and Mrs. O'Neill had an opportunity to visit all of the schools the first two days. And what we saw were kids helping kids, people being kind. At the high school, it was really great to see people supporting, you know, I sort of just always feel like the new kid on the block, remember what it feels like to be in ninth grade and making sure they knew where they needed to go. But the same thing in the elementary school, we saw some kids that were crying, and some of the fifth graders come over, put their arm around them, and tell them they're going to be okay. So really grateful for our students for a great opening. And then, just really quickly, I want to thank Justin Smalley and Sarah Durkin, they're our band and chorus, who helped us. The band performed at our opening day. And Riley Knapp, she was, she sang the Star Spangled Banner, so, thank you.
I do want to just take a quick step back. You'll notice there are some changes to our agenda. There's some additional things added. After public comment, we've added school committee discussion on public comment. We did want to add an opportunity, when we get public comment, for the school committee an opportunity to be able to have a little bit of discussion on items that are maybe brought up. It's not necessarily a back and forth, but an opportunity to maybe address some items. Some of those items may be addressed later in the meeting, but we, it's just an opportunity to even say that, that that's, to let whoever makes public comment know that they are being heard, and just even to say that's going to be addressed later on in the meeting. So that's been added to the agenda, so I wanted just to bring that to everyone's attention. We've also added our next item, which is roundtable reports. This gives the committee an opportunity to maybe comment on events that they've participated in or been able to view in the, in the community, maybe recognition that they've had within the community, anything that they've noticed within the schools that they want to comment on or bring to the attention of the committee. Any recognitions or?
Yes, Mr. Moskovich and I went to the opening day, and it was, didn't mean to add that emphasis there. It was great. Riley is one of my softball players, and she sang beautifully. The band was great. They had two conductors, trying to keep in sync with each other. It was kind of interesting, but they managed to do it. Yeah, but it was a great event, and pretty well attended, too. I feel like a good majority of the staff was there.
Okay. Thank you. And Mr. Moskovich spoke on behalf of the school committee?
Oh, yes, he did.
So we appreciate that, for speaking on behalf of the school committee. Thank you very much.
I do believe, Ms. Koenig, that the Music Association has a band competition coming up in a few weeks that, if they're listening, I hope I get to be presenting the awards again. Please, 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 it was so much fun, but to go watch the bands and as they perform, it's so amazing.
Sorry, Mr. Hicks, but I may, we could share the honor? I did have to say to them, it's like my lifelong, it's like my life has become full circle because I was the drum major in high school.
As was I.
As were you.
As was I.
Dueling drum majors, let's do it.
And that's the Nezba, September 28th?
It's coming up in September. I think it's the end, yes.
September 28th, yes.
I guess I'll just have to be a spectator this year.
We can work it out.
Is that in the stadium?
Yes. And that is always a wonderful event to go and watch. Especially if you have elementary school children, middle school children, take them. It is, it is really entertaining. I know my children are always really enthralled by it. Thank you. All right. Upcoming.
No, I was going to say, I thought you were on upcoming events.
Upcoming events. We are moving on to upcoming community events.
September 25th, CPAC is hosting online at 7:00 p.m. Get to Know the IEP, get to Know Your Parents Rights. They posted it on their Facebook page, I think the flyers, the flyer going home.
Flyers going home.
Yep, flyers going home.
All right.
And I believe families received a notification of rights via email yesterday or today.
So we are required every year to send out the procedural safeguards. It used to be called Parents Rights brochure, but it's called the procedural safeguards. I have received some emails today. There, the data system in which we pull all of the names may not quite be up to as much date as sort of the paperwork. So if parents got those and they shouldn't have, please do not worry. And there's no need for you to have to do anything. And if you have further questions, feel free to call the special education office.
Thank you. All right.
Just with the upcoming events, I know they were talking about the, you mentioned the high school open house, the middle school open house, the ABCC. I know at least Franklin has their open house on Monday, on October 20th, or September 16th. I don't know about any of the other elementary schools, but I'm assuming those are likely happening in the same time period, too.
They, I believe, are all happening. All elementary holds it on the same night.
Okay.
All the elementary open houses. Yeah, busy, busy day, it'll be a busy Monday.
All right. We also have coming up our school committee chat, the, at the Fall Festival, which is September 21st. We did do an updated poll. It looks like we have very limited availability, so I'm not sure if we're going to be able to do our community chat.
Ms. Cormier, is the one a yes or a?
Not for all of, I think this is where I didn't do the poll the second time. I only did it the first time. So I think I'm not available for all of the slots, so, but I can, I just can't do, but I can do, so it's a setup, I think we're at eight something for the setup. We're not, we shouldn't have a seven o'clock slot. I did sign up for the setup, I think it's 8:30 for the setup, and then I can go until about 12:30 that day.
Okay. So it looks like maybe you and I can do setup to 12?
12:30, and then I have to leave about an hour and a half, and then I can come back and help finish up, but there's.
Okay, so it looks like we may be able to have some coverage then.
Yeah.
Perfect. All right, sounds good. So we'll be holding that. That's an opportunity for, for the public to come, see the school committee while you're out at the Fall Festival. If you have any questions, if you want to stop by at our table and say hello, we would love that.
And Fall Festival is at?
It is at the high school this year. Yes.
Last year was what?
Yes.
Because of the rain.
Yep.
Will there be bubbles?
If I'm there, I'm bringing, I'm bringing my bubble machine. I've got it, and if it's warm, I do have the 900 Freeze Pops I bought for the last one that weren't frozen. They are now frozen, for anyone who missed that.
The bubbles work very well to attract children, not necessarily parents.
Yeah, it's less, there is a few less Freeze Pops. My daughter's flag football team had some. They're in frozen.
Okay. Now we have superintendent and central office updates.
Sorry, Madam Chair, excuse me.
Yes.
Are we considering dates now for the other community chats, or are you going to do that later?
I think what we'll do is look at additional dates later on. I'll have maybe Michelle send out another poll to look at the next events.
Okay.
Unless anybody has any suggestion of upcoming community events or ideas of where to hold the next one. I know in the past, we've done them at the library. We may just pick another date to hold it at the library.
And that works fine.
Okay.
It's worked fine.
Yeah, see, it's kind of, I don't have any different ideas, but it's, we can be where people already are. It's kind of, but these festivals is hard, you know, whether it was the North Andover Night Out or Fall Festival, it's kind of hard because people are with their families to really kind of have good discussions. But I'm just trying to think how we can get to where people, we'll get more casual collisions and give people an opportunity to ask questions and not have to come out separately, which is, is challenging. So everybody coming to ask a question is also balancing their kids at home, and it just becomes more of a challenge. So I'm just, maybe that's something we can think about and come back with some more ideas of where, how else can we just be where, especially since so many of us are out there with our kids anyway.
Right.
Be where the events are happening.
Yeah, that's a good point.
We might think about, we have LPAC meetings, so maybe two school committee members might want to attend an LPAC meeting and have an opportunity.
Absolutely.
Sorry, which meeting?
LPAC, it's our, our parent association for our multilingual learners, so English learner parent, parent association. And so we'll have our first meeting in most likely October, November, and so we would love to have you join.
Okay.
Or PTO, too. We could also consider PTO meetings, if they're rolling.
Yeah, those are some great ideas.
Things like that.
Okay. Perfect, thank you. Okay, now we can move on to the updates.
Mrs. Ando, we will make it a slideshow.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Yeah, so it's the first day of school. That's the ninth grade orientation up there on the left-hand side. Down at the bottom, you see the middle school. Up top, that's Franklin. Below them, Atkinson. Then sort of going across, up top is Thompson School. I just love that picture of the kids with their backpacks sort of walking into school. Then we have ABCC, Sergeant School, and Kittredge School across the street, so everybody was happy and in.
Ready to go.
So I created a new page just of some of the school visits that I've made and some of the district and community events. So as I've sort of wandered through some of the schools, kids will often say to me, "What do you do all day?" And parents, sometimes family members will say to me, "What do you do all day?" And so I thought I would just show some of the things I do all day, not necessarily all of the things. But just as you see, in August, Lynn O'Neill and I had the opportunity to go to the Crest Collaborative to see their new space. I think it's a year or two, maybe a year old. It's in Andover, and we belong to the Crest Collaborative. As you know, Mr. Moskovich is sitting on the board, but it was wonderful to go and tour the facilities and see where some of our students might have the opportunity to have their educational needs met. I participate once a month in a, something called a facilities coordination meeting. So all of the people who work on facilities in the district, so that would be our, John Mullin, Steve Foster, the town side, Greg Landry and I, we meet, we come together. As you know, we transferred some of our funds into the town side, so we meet once a month to see how that's going, look at large projects. And so that's part of the work that we've been doing. Before school started, I had a safety meeting with Chief Gray. I know that safety is something that our students have brought forward. I have received emails from parents, emails from staff members. It is something that I think we should have a bigger discussion about, and I know that some, the school committee already has plans to have a presentation. But I wanted the public to know that in the beginning of the year, I did meet with Chief Gray. We talk about any of our safety concerns, we review the ALICE procedures, and anything that might pertain to the schools. We had our new staff orientation. That picture down at the bottom is all of the new staff, or some of the new staffers that have joined us here in North Andover. We had our opening day greeting, as you already heard, from Mr. Brown, which was fantastic. Our staff orientation and had professional development for two days before the students came. Then we opened up our schools. On August 27th, I met with Chief Weir, again, to look at safety. Chief Weir is our fire chief in the district, going over fire drill procedures, access to buildings, any other concerns that he may have, egresses, all of those kinds of things, what we talk about. Our ABCC and preschool opened. On September 4th, we had our first leadership meeting for this year. So this year, we are holding leadership meetings about once a month, give or take, and talking about different topics with our leaders. It's really an extension of the work we started at Summer Retreat, so our first leadership meeting. We, we had talked about our previous school improvement plans at Summer Retreat, and so at our first leadership, leadership meeting this year, it was really developing their school improvement plan. Mrs. Ando showed them our district improvement plan, which we will show to you. And then they built their goals off of, off of that. So soon, our school leaders will be coming to share their school improvement plans with you. We also had a little bit of fun because we think it's important to build our team, and so we do some team building each time we get together with our leaders. Every week, I meet with the town manager, and so the town manager and I have an opportunity to get together, to talk about some things that might be pertaining to school in town. As you know, we have had a really, our close relationship as we have been going through some of our financial issues. We will talk about some of those things and just making sure that we're connecting and starting to get ready for any of the other events that might be happening in town. I participate in the middle school building committee, and it was so great. We were able to go back to the middle school this week. So we have been working offsite at the town hall because of the construction, but this time, we were able to be in the middle school library, and then we had a tour of the middle school. So that's wonderful. Our North Andover High School had their open house, as you've already heard. On September 11th, I was able to participate in the 9/11 remembrance ceremony that our fire department holds. And Christina Jamanson, who's a senior at North Andover, I think she's a senior, at North Andover High School sang "The Star Spangled Banner" and "God Bless America." It brought tears to my eyes and made the hairs on my arms stand up. It was beautiful. And then also on September 11th, Kristin Ando and I participated in the Merrimack Valley Superintendent's Meeting. It's when we meet with all the superintendents and assistant superintendents in the Merrimack Valley. It's a wonderful way to connect, but also a way to grow ourselves professionally.
I am super.
Yes.
Had mentioned around school safety, be a larger discussion later. I just wanted to ask, when you met with either Chief Gray or Chief Weir, were there any urgent or pressing concerns that they had that needed to be addressed?
There were not any urgent or pressing concerns. One of the things that we have, well, we just, we worked on our FOBs. So we made sure that our police, that the key police personnel and fire personnel have FOBs that have complete access to all of our buildings. That's what I, when I say FOB, I mean a door opener. So our buildings have like a scanner, so making sure that they all have them, obviously they can get in. But we, there was a couple more, we wanted to make sure. So Mr. Grant worked with both chiefs this week to make sure that was all set, but neither had any pressing issues. We really talked about the ALICE drills, about following up on the ALICE drills, and really wanting to be partners in the school. And one of the things Chief Weir and I talked about was how often people want to know when a drill is coming, but it's also important to not know when a drill is coming so that we can really practice for those kinds of opportunities. And that typically we practice drills when students are in their homeroom or in a classroom situation. We may avoid times like a lunchroom or like an assembly, but we would want to move into practicing drills when our students may be in other spots of the building so that we know how to properly do that. So that's a goal for us. Okay. Yep. I just wanted to share with you our enrollment. So here's our enrollment for 2024, 2025. You have this in your packet as well. So we have 4,586 students in our school district this year, which is a little bit less than what we had last year. You can see where the breakdown is there. So just to let everybody know, obviously Anne Bradstreet is our early childhood, that's pre-K and K. Our elementary schools, we have our middle school, our high school. Listed Knight Academy for you, we have a Scarlet Knight Academy. We have our TOP program, which is our 18 to 22 program, listed our outer district special education students as well.
TOP program is the one we run collaboratively with?
With Andover.
And I'm just noticing that the kindergarten number of three thirty-one is pretty much an average of the high school graduation classes, or the size of the high school classes as well. It seems like we're just holding pretty steady with that.
Holding steady.
With the three thirty mark.
And then just a small breakdown so you can see class size. I know some people have raised that question because we have a few less classroom teachers. We were able to reduce some of our classroom teachers based on either attrition or numbers of students, but our class sizes still look really good and still fall within the school committee range. So we have Anne Bradstreet for you, pre-K and K, and then all of the elementary schools.
Why is there such a large difference in average class size between some of the elementary schools?
Size of the building. So if you have a larger school, you can hold more children in that school. And when you have a smaller school, once you go over twenty-two or twenty-three, you have to add another class, which then reduces all of those classes. So if you only have two of something and you have fifty-two kids, it makes a little, or you have fifty-five kids, you end up making a third class and it gets a little bit smaller. When you have a larger school, you can spread them out. Does that make sense? Yeah. And one of the things we may want to talk about at some point is school lines and where, which neighborhoods are going to schools. I don't want to say the R-word, redistricting. But we also have an opportunity in North Andover for parents to petition to have their students go to a school outside of their district, their neighborhood school. We have many students that are participating in school outside of their neighborhood school. So we don't really have a true number of, of students within their neighborhood school. It probably is something that should be looked at, whether or not the practice, I think there makes case for the practice, and there are some, some good reasons for it, but we probably want to get a sense of where our students. And then, as you know, or you may not know, in Kittredge School, we have two split grades. So we have a two, three, and a four, five.
Could I?
Sure.
This is a bigger discussion, but how does, how does it work out having second and third graders in the same classroom? How do you work on that?
It works.
If this isn't the right time, it's fine.
No, it's a good question. And the question is because it is one of our specialized programs as well in the district to service some of our special education students. The teachers have done a very nice job being able to balance the curriculum, but it is something that we should look at and making sure that we are, that everybody has access to all of the curriculum in that grade level, and we want to make sure we're correctly servicing the needs of the special education students that we created those classrooms for.
I mean, I guess the basic question is, do the second graders get second grade curriculum and the third graders get third grade?
Yes and no. So yes, they do, but they also have some blended curriculum.
Is it more difficult in math where it's more cumulative than other subjects, like you really have to, you can't do third grade math, do you do second grade math? It's not necessarily true in social studies.
Correct. But the classroom is also designed to be able to support the learners in that classroom who may need a more explicit teaching. So your question's a good one because it is something that we will want to review as we're looking at all of our special education programs.
No, I happen, my granddaughter just got assigned to such a class, not here. But so it's, it's sort of on my mind and on my daughter-in-law.
And then just, I just wanted to give you, oh, do you have a question? No. I know. I just wanted to show you a few pictures of names. I feel like we've, I know, right? You guys are looking at it like, why didn't we get it? We know, we've seen so many construction photos, and it just really, it's amazing. I had been there two weeks before and it did not look like this. Mr. Hicks and I took a walk through together. It did not look like this. So new stairwell, the classrooms, the hallway, I just love that picture of sort of going down the hallway. Again, students in the classroom and then a picture from outside. You know, everybody has worked really hard. There's still a few pieces of equipment that we're waiting for. We are in the process of planning a ribbon cutting ceremony that we'll be able to invite people to. And then moving into the budget. Okay. Let me just give myself a minute here. So what you see here is, just as a reminder, what I do is I try to, oh, I think, Chris, can you go to the other page first? No, yeah, this is.
This one?
No, go back to the first one. That's right, let's just go there. Okay. So for school committee, you have all four of the ones, it's the second sheet, I think it's, yeah, that one. You have all four of the, the school committee, the times that I presented, I'm just doing the very last one on the screen here. So I think when we met last time, I was able to say to you that our, obviously our beginning budget was sixty-two million, sixty-four thousand, six hundred and twenty-nine, and we had fifty-one thousand, seven hundred and nine dollars, seven hundred and nine thousand, three hundred and eighteen dollars and ninety-nine cents, and reminded you that we still had not encumbered our salaries. We have now encumbered our salaries, so you will see a dramatic difference in what those two numbers look like, right? So we have moved our encumbrances, our salaries into the line items. So we have a ending balance of four million, six hundred and eighty-nine thousand, three hundred and eighty-two dollars and ninety-five cents. That's where we are financially. Anybody have any questions here before I go to the next one?
In the encumbrance, is that, have you also uncovered other known expenses?
Correct. Any known expenses that we have, we've encumbered.
Okay.
Throughout the whole year? So for example, that's, that is all known salaries for the entire school year.
Correct.
Taken out because we know we're going to have to pay it, so.
So it's there.
And what we know now for outer district tuition, what we know for?
Yeah, the next slide I'm going to show you.
Okay.
So I have just two questions. When you encumber salaries, do you encumber, you encumber, of course, the regular salary?
Correct.
Most of the time, teachers get, most teachers get extra money because they do extra things, which is actually very healthy.
That is not.
Do you make a guess about that, or you don't encumber that?
I don't, but I do, I'm going to show it to you on the next slide.
Oh, okay, okay. And then the other question, sort of the obvious one, about the negative one and a half million dollars.
Correct. We have to do a transfer of funds.
Sorry?
We have to do a transfer of funds.
Okay.
Why is it negative?
Because we are spending more than we have in that line item.
I mean, okay, so we just need a?
We have the money to be able to support it, but we, we.
Have to get it from somewhere else.
Yeah, we, we put the budget into munis or into our budgeting system based on the budget that was approved, and we have more expenditures. And this is probably what we would have typically seen because we know that we had some issues, and we're seeing now that, so it's true. Our budget wasn't what we needed to. We have the funds to be able to handle it. We're going to, to make a budget transfer or request a budget transfer. And this is good data for us moving forward. So what this slide shows you is that remainder of four million, six hundred and eighty-nine thousand, three hundred and eighty-two dollars and ninety-five cents, but then it shows you things that we have not yet encumbered. So we have not encumbered our substitutes, we have not encumbered our long-term substitutes. That might be if a person was out on medical leave or maternity or some other reason that somebody was out. We have not encumbered our mune attendance, our custodial overtime, our TA hours or extra stipends, academic stipends, as you were talking about, tuition, some of our outer district tuition, special education transportation, regular transportation, athletic coaches, and tuition reimbursement. So what we did was we have projected, those numbers are projected based on either two or three years. We looked back two or three years, we made some projections. So this is what we're projecting we're going to spend, which brings, is four million, twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and fifty-two and thirty-eight cents, which leaves us with a balance of six hundred and sixty-seven thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars and fifty-seven cents. Before you panic, remember, everything's encumbered. This is what we're projecting we're going to spend. Each time I come here, those numbers are going to get smaller because we will spend them. And we believe this is, largely shows what we will have to spend on things in the district. Does not include our grant funding that we, and it doesn't include like our title money. It is scary, I'm not going to lie. You know, when I saw it, it is challenging to look at that number, but we know, how I feel is that we know we had financial issues, and it is very hard to recover from a financial deficit of, of where we were. But we are very mindful of the money, and we are tracking it very carefully.
I just want to clarify that even though it is in red, that is a positive.
That is a positive. Oh, so sorry.
It's positive.
I should have done like what, it's a positive.
Yeah.
Can we not have it red?
Okay, good note. Yellow, it's a positive.
So that's, this is actually, if you, a good, but it's a positive story.
It's a positive story in that we have not overspent. We know what we have to, to spend our money on. We have reserved or encumbered the money that we need to spend, and it helps us as we think about any extra fun things that we need to purchase.
Clamp on questions if I could?
So the, the six sixty-seven is, is at this instant of time, snapshot of what you would
expect to have left over if everything went the way.
Correct.
Predicted.
Correct.
That way currently forecasted, right?
Correct.
There'd be a surplus of six sixty-seven, four thirty. Okay. So, so a couple of questions. One is, are we using munis now?
We've always used munis.
Okay.
We haven't always used munis to its fullest capabilities. We are in the process of, of working on that. We're working, that's part of the meetings that I do with the town manager. We're in the process of using all, all the capabilities of munis, but we've always used munis.
Okay, but you are now using it in, in the way that it would show you like remaining, remaining funds, et cetera?
Correct. And we are educating ourselves.
Okay.
And educating our, our leaders to understand. You know, one of the things that leaders will be working on and knowing is, like, I think you talked about this, Mr. Moskovich, their own individual budgets. And one of the items that they probably didn't really have a sense of is what we were spending on substitutes. So now every school has a substitute budget. They know what, what we've allotted for them for substitutes. They're watching their own budget. It gives them some autonomy that if they want to bring in substitutes to do some kind of professional development, they just know that it's coming off of their bottom line of, of that number. And I'm very proud of the leaders in this district. You know, this week I have had several calls from them saying that, you know, I want to do this. Can you, is this still within the line of my budget? You know, are you okay with that? And being really mindful of it.
And my second, my second question was had to do with grants, you mentioned. And you know, I'm a big believer, I want to see a full picture at some point, like when you get.
Right, so the, the grants aren't all in yet.
Right, so my question specifically about that is, I understand you're not there yet, but with the grants, so when we're looking at this picture, grants are or are not in here?
The only grant that's in there is special education tuition. So Tracy was factoring in some of the chapter seventy money, but we have not factored in the grants for Title I, Title II, Title III, which are the federal grants that we receive to support teaching and learning in our district.
Okay. So at some point, when you can.
Those grants, yeah, right, so right now is the submittal. So every, Kristen's working on, Mrs. Ando's working on her grants, Mrs. O'Neil's working on her grants. We're getting all of that into the Department of Education. We're also working on, so those are the grants that are, that everybody get every year. And then there are other competitive grants through the Department of Education that we are actively seeking. And we are in a really good, I, my fingers crossed, but we're in a really good place, I believe, to receive some of those grants because of the work that was done prior to my being here, largely due to the work that Kristen has done with high-quality instructional materials. And we have a really good Student Opportunity Act plan, and our plan has been accepted, and that is one of the criteria for receiving the grants. And then we've also this year just put a proposal in to receive a Cummings Grant, which is not, that's an independent grant, but that is a, potentially a three hundred thousand dollar grant, a hundred thousand dollars every year.
But will some of those grants be, need to be used for specific?
Very specific. The Fed, all of the grants that we get from the Department of Education are very specific for what we can spend the money on. So Title I goes to our Title I schools, which is based on economics, socioeconomic economics of those buildings, and so it has to be funded in that way. A Title I grant is used to supplement, not surplant. So that means that you, it's, that any student or how you're using that money, they get everything that everybody gets from the general operating budget, and then they get something extra.
Right, so those wouldn't have an impact on this, but?
Not really, but, but perhaps in some ways.
Okay.
Right, being able to support, if there's a staffing, you can use it for staffing. You might be able to do that.
So in that sense, it does. So where I'm going with this, my request would be that at some point, in addition to this report, we see a?
Yes, I think it's a, it's a great sort of mid-year range to be able to really see. And that's what we're trying to do this year. I kind of feel like in some ways we are, what do they say, flying the plane and building the plane at the same time? Because we are putting together some of the pieces that are missing.
All right, good, thank you.
So I have a couple of questions.
So, so I have a couple of questions. I guess just to make sure I understand about the available funds. The, if, if we spend exactly what you anticipate for all of those not encumbered. We will cover the deficit in the special education and have six hundred and sixty-seven thousand left over. Do, is that a correct?
Correct.
Okay. And, and what about, should I ask about non-hourly? Or is that not, is, is, is that not relevant?
More specific.
These are expenses that you expect on staff.
Yep.
That you've not encumbered.
Correct.
But are there expenses that you expect on non-staff? Or is that, do I, am I just?
No, do you mean like on if something breaks, like the hot water heater?
Yeah, or is that all taken in here?
It is encumbered into the maintenance um expenses. But if we had something larger or we had some other um. Something else that came up, no, it's not encumbered into there. And it's not factored in. What we are, what I'm saying to you is I believe that we're going to need four million dollars for the things that I know. It gives us six hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars for the things I don't know.
But everything you anticipate at the moment would be covered with six hundred and whatever left over?
Correct.
Okay, you.
I don't want to give you false hope, so.
No, no, I, I mean, you should always expect the unexpected.
Correct.
So you, you and Mr. Brown mentioned unis, but I think that's sufficiently good news that you should explain to people who might not know. Just what that means and why it's good news that you're doing it.
What what means? Unis or?
Yeah, I thought Mr. Brown asked you whether you were using unis.
Yep.
Not everybody listening here might know what that is. And since it speaks well for you.
Okay.
I'm inviting you to explain what you're doing. And, no, no, I mean, it's good that you're doing it.
Munis is the software, I guess for lack of better words, a program that we use that is really attracts all of our spending. It has the ability to, we have all of our salaries in. Um, we keep all of our purchase orders, all of the money going in, money coming out. It is an accounting system that we use. Um, and we, in the past, haven't always used every piece of it to its fullest capability to help us project. So munis has the ability to help us project money that we believe that we're going to need to spend. So we are um working closely with the town to be able to use, to understand munis better.
And, and if I could add, it, one of the things, it does, so munis is short for municipal information systems. And what, one of the big things it brings is alarms, right? If things are heading in the wrong direction, it will alert you. And that's, that's what's different.
Well, yes, that, and I, I guess I was gonna ask, it sounds like the answer to this one is yes, that, that. A principal of a given school who has a certain amount of money for attending all those stipends and so on. She will know how much is left.
Correct.
So this is, that's why it's, it's good news.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Couple of questions.
Sure.
So, and the, so with the.
You've got the total for the district for sub, long-term subs, noon attendance, and very, very specific numbers. Um, notes, are all those broken up? So each individual school, if applicable, has a budget? Like, does each of the schools have their own sub-budget that they can track to and know?
We're, we're, we're getting there.
Getting there.
We're, it has been maintained by central office, but our goal this year is to help the principals see how much their, their piece of the pie is. And so they can start tracking it. So we are starting with substitutes.
Okay.
On the. And things for noon attendance. So, we, noon attendants are hired for three hours a day, so we are holding firm on that's what they should be working. In the past, sometimes, rightly so, they've done really helpful things. They've either covered maybe for a lunch. Or done some other support. We've had some extra hours of noon attendance, but this year they know that three hours is the max.
Um, oh, sorry. Did you have one more?
I do have two more.
Sorry.
Um, on the salaries, um, does that include, is, with the encumbering for the year, any increases? Yeah, I know it's sometimes, it's hard to know exactly what might happen, but any step increases and things like that? Is there some estimation around any salary increases?
The step increases.
Okay, so it does include it, okay.
Correct.
All right. Um, and then?
It doesn't include academic stipends, but that's why that's down at the bottom.
Okay. Add one more, but I forgot it.
Um, in the, speaking of, the noon attendance made me think about it. Um, do these projections include monies that we might be able to offset um with uh food services?
That's our portion.
Okay, so that includes that we've already factored in what we think we'll be bringing in there from those two different other enterprise accounts and we can charge back?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Could I ask a follow-up question on that? The total spending here is the appropriation, sixty-two oh six four, right?
Correct.
So I'm a little confused at how the, um, the money that Mr. Hicks is referring to would cover that.
He's saying down at the bottom where it says noon attendance. So we, noon attendance, uh, part of their salary comes out of the general operating budget and part of their salary comes from the revolving account from food services. He's asking if that.
Oh, I see, okay.
That's just what the operating budget will be paying, not.
But if, if the revenue from that source is bigger than that particular expenditure, we could actually apply it. Is that right? Or no?
We, we, we split it with food services because when they're monitoring the cafeteria, that's something that food services would, could pay for. But when they're monitoring recess, that's something that the general operating budget should pay for.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. I think that's it, right? Do I have any more slides?
Okay, thank you. So I know, in order to get us through the end of last year, that the entire school district and yourself was, went through kind of extra measures.
Mm-hmm.
To really cut back spending, identify where there was things that maybe didn't need to get bought. All those, and you got us through, was it the last thirty days or forty-five days to get us through? Are you, are this, are you, we still oper- are you still operating under that same, kind of looking where there are opportunities?
We have a soft freeze on the budget.
Okay.
Uh, which means that um, there are essential items that, that um principals, leaders are able to buy. Um, but if they, anything outside of an essential item, they have to have prior approval. Um, myself, from Mrs. Ando, from Lynn O'Neal, or from Greg Landry, um, in order to purchase those items.
Okay, I have one other question that, I think you referred to the state's reimbursement for special ed tuition and.
You're asking me all the hard questions. You're asking me all the hard questions tonight.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I, um, I just want to give you the opportunity to shine under difficult circumstances.
Okay.
Does, does that money go to the town or to us?
The Medicaid money or the chap?
Oh, I guess both of them, actually.
Medicaid money. We do the work to collect um the information about Medicaid. The way that, that the state is built, the money goes to the town. But, but town manager has been wonderful meeting with us and we are um receiving that money back.
But the, the numbers you showed us do not include that.
No, it does not.
So her generosity, I guess I would say wisdom, means actually the situation is somewhat more optimistic than was.
Yes, yes. There's that money and there's the money from the um opioid grant that um she has um given to us. The opioid grant is a little bit, has very strict.
I'm sorry, the which?
Opioid grant from the um settlement for the opioids, um, has very strict rules in the way that, that those funds can be spent. Um, so our lead nurse, Cheryl Barzac, has been working with D K C, um, from the town, uh, Assistant Town Manager. Um, in order to look at ways that we can use those funds within the district.
But this, the state, it's called the circuit breaker, expenditure on a given student in excess of a certain amount, a certain percentage of that is paid by the state. But it goes directly to the town. Is that right? Or it, and then they reimburse it? Or does it come to us?
It comes to us.
So where does that show up in these, in the figures you showed us?
It was in the tuition. So we have applied that. So what we think, um, uh, special ju- uh, tuition. So we have sort of, that's the one where that has already been placed in. So we've applied that. We believe we still need to come up with four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in order to meet our tuition needs. If you remember last year, we took some of this year's um money, circuit breaker money, to offset some of our deficits last year.
But it, so it's, it comes in as a negative expenditure? Is that what you're saying? The actual tuition is higher, but you, we don't have to pay all of it out of the appropriation because some of it gets paid from the state?
Correct.
Okay, so I guess in the same spirit that Mr. Brown was saying, at some point it'd be helpful to see it grows.
Correct.
But I understand that it's gonna take you a while and that's fine.
Thank you.
My last one, I promise. So just, and just coming back to the question that I asked on anyone. So you'd said that the soft freeze is still on. So I think it, just as we look at these numbers. It's understanding that, that people aren't necessarily, leaders aren't necessarily able to get everything that they want.
They are not.
Everything they need, the essential items, but certainly not everything they want.
Not everything that they want.
So these numbers are likely, as we think towards the next year, that even if you're, you're able to bring us in at, at these numbers. That the budget for next year, there might even be some pent-up need.
There will be.
Schools that we need to consider.
Right, so I think that's when we're building FY twenty-six. I mean, we're going to need to think about the things that we weren't able to bring into the school this year. Um, and then any other needs that we need beyond that.
Still, it's a very lean year, as you've said.
Yes.
It's a lean year. And we appreciate the support that we have received from um some of the organizations, BTOs, PTACs, Booster Clubs. You know, the town community has been supporting um us in lots of ways.
So I don't know if this is helpful or not, but somewhere in the law is a provision, or is or was, that, that if you, if a school department does not spend all of its money. Up to five percent, it can be carried over. I wrote the provision. The Department of Education got confused in the guidelines, but if it's still around, it would be worth knowing about it.
It, it would, and I think it is. I'll be honest, I, we're not going to have five percent to carry over next year. It's gonna be a few years before we have five percent to carry over. But it, it is, it is a healthy goal to have.
Yeah, it should be there, but it's, it's, at some point, not, not immediately, as you say, it'd be nice to know if we can actually use that.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have a letter here.
Oh, yes, sorry. Tracy is asking, our supervisor of accounts is asking us to transfer six million, two hundred thousand dollars from various salary accounts to offset six thousand, two million dollars in negative salary accounts. So she's reviewed the accounts, and much of this, she believes is due to the transfers from the um voluntary separation um program. And she wants to confirm that our employees are being paid from the correct accounts. So you, what you don't see is, so, for example, there is an account in one school uh for coaches, which they have a, a position of coaches. It runs, part of our coaches runs through each school's budget. I don't know if it was keyed incorrectly or if there was a mistake, but it is showing one point two million dollars in that account. We don't need one point two million dollars from our coaches. She needs to be able to transfer that into the correct account to be able to pay for salaries.
When we see the number on the budget report, we just see the total thing.
Correct.
And you have all these, because of some movement and things that have happened, you need to move into the money.
We just want to move it into the right.
Place to the right school, to the right function, so you actually know what you're spending on that thing.
Correct.
And then that will help us have better historical data.
Yes.
Okay.
And have a better sense of how to plan for fiscal year twenty-six.
Correct. So we have our, where all of our money is there. We're covering the salaries. It's just if you saw, if you drilled down into the budget, you would see that.
It's not in the right envelope.
Yes.
It's the file drawer, baby.
Correct.
Right, file drawer, not in the right envelope.
All right.
That, that makes sense. Going forward, if we put on letters like this for transfer approval, would it be possible or would it make sense to put the actual salary account names on here, just so kind of that letter of regus, we know?
It would be.
What's moving?
Pages.
It would be a lot.
Okay.
But I, I'm hoping, we will make every effort to be able to do that.
Okay, just so that right, I guess in a meeting, right? If it's truly ten more pages of something that doesn't make sense, then, then that wasn't a good ask.
It's salary to salary. If we were doing something different, I think, yes, but we will make every effort.
Do we know kind of how this happened? How these got just dispersed randomly?
No. And we, again, some of it could have been from the voluntary separation program. Maybe we owed them, like, some certain amount of people took the incentive. They put the money into, I don't, we don't. That could have been keyed incorrectly, um, but we want to fix it.
Okay.
Do we, we have to vote on this?
Yes, please.
Uh, ma'am chair, I may, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request for a transfer of six point two million from various salary counts to other um salary counts in the amount of six point two million um for this year's budget.
How many million?
Six point two.
Oh, it sounded like eleven point two.
Nope, sorry, six point two.
Just to be clear. Second.
Any further discussion?
Um, thank you for being so mindful, like, making sure everything makes sense and it's coming from the right place and that we're doing.
Tracy. She's amazing. Our supervisor of accounts.
Thank you very much, Tracy.
I think it just is one of the things is we continue, it's just, continue to identify, or, or if possibly, continue to, to identify where things like this happen. I think it's gonna be important to make sure we, we do understand the why. So just moving forward, processes can get put in place so. We don't have that to this extent agai- again. So I think kind of that's, that's where knowing the why behind things in the wrong accounts is, is very important.
I'm curious if, if, um, I, I understand everything you said so far, but I'm wondering if this same thing might be happening in other places, right? Not just in salaries. Is that a possibility too? Or unlikely?
Unlikely. But it could be, I mean, there are probably going to be some other items that we will ask to transfer funds. I think this is a year of really discovering what's being paid out of those funds and what our, what our bills are.
Okay. Um, I'm, 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 okay. I'm glad to hear that in the previous discussion, you said that these projections, the ones on the right side, were based on at least two years of historical data, right? The better, the more we do that, the better, right? We get an idea of trends. Okay.
I think Mr. Hicks's point is really well-taken, that, that what this means is you're getting the baseline right. So next year, when Ms. Cormier asks the appropriate question she asked, it'll be a much better history to base it on.
Correct. And next year, I, you know, no one should be sitting here till asking her to transfer six point two million dollars.
I, I did have a, a sort of minor question about when, when somebody had, has more education and so their salary goes up. Um, you said you, you put, you've taken that into account. If somebody gets this degree in the middle of the year, does their salary go up right then? Or does it go up?
I'm sorry, Mr. Moskovich. Can we, can we stick to what we have? We have a motion pending.
Oh, I'm sorry.
On this matter.
No, no.
So can we, is there any other discussion on this matter? Okay, so let's take a vote on this. Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Moskovich?
Yes.
Ms. Cormier?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Tracy is free to check those accounts.
Thank you.
Can I ask a quick clarifying question on it?
Could I ask my question now?
Well, the, this one's specific to this. Um, technically, um, Ms. Koenig or Ms. Leith, do we have to, since this is from salaries to salaries and not through, um, not from a different cost center, does it have to go through school committee?
It does not technically have to go through school committee.
But I thank you anyway.
In all transparency, and that, that is our goal this year, to be completely transparent with you, the school committee, and the public. Tracy and I felt it was appropriate and to bring it forward to you so you know. But you are correct, that is something that we could have done without a school committee vote, but we appreciate your vote.
I really appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Absolutely. Hundred, yes.
Well, I thi- I do think that actually the procedures say, the policies say that all transfers need approval. And I think there are kinds that shouldn't need it, but we may need actually to change. The policies to make small transfers that shouldn't need our approval. But anyway, my other question was if somebody's years of education go up in the middle of the year, does their salary go up right away? Or is it only payable at the end of the next year?
It's in the contract when it happens.
It's in the contract when they can change a track.
So it's hard to know for sure.
We do know. One of the things that I have talked to, um, Juliette Darman, the president of NADA about, and she was amenable, and we'll bring it up again at Mutual Concerns, is there isn't um a, there's no tracking system in this district. For a teacher to tell us when they believe they may finish a degree. Um, it, this is not binding, but it would be helpful if we could just do an informal survey to our staff. Um, probably right about now, saying, do you think you'll be changing, earning a degree at a certain time, so that we can plan for that in the FY twenty-six budget?
I've seen it, uh, Mr. Moskovich, I've seen it um in some districts only be allowed at the beginning of the school year, and some districts will do it um at the beginning of the school year, in September, then in January, at the beginning of the next second semester, that, to make that easier to project.
Yes.
And I don't remember specifically what's in our particular contract.
I don't either, but I think, I mean, you can look it up. I don't recall either, but it's in there. It's definitely in there.
All right, thank you. We're gonna move on to the school committee chair updates. Um, first I want to note, we will make sure you all have packets for the next, for upcoming meetings. So that you're able to follow along a little bit easier. We'll make sure that that happens. Um, so first matter, we have our Food Services Association contract. I believe at the last meeting, we did announce. That an agreement um was voted on by the school committee in executive session. I believe we did have a public vote as well, um, that was unanimous. Uh, we do have the contracts here for signature, and I will have Mr. Hicks just give a brief um overview.
Yeah, we came to a new contract, uh, sell a new contract with the Food Services Department. Um, it only took a few meetings. Um, so thank you very much to the negotiating teams on both sides. Uh, Mr. Moskovich worked uh with, alongside uh me with um Mr. Landry and Erica Murphy. I was like, I know the first name, blanking on the second right now, it's late. Um, thank you to everybody and to the union negotiators as well. Uh, it was an amicable discussion. Um, the highlight is that we were able to make sure that the food service workers, the bulk of them, were, got a, a raise that puts them um at a very, much closer to a living wage. And it was, it was a larger increase than we originally anticipated, but a necessary one to make sure that our, that those employees are getting paid appropriately and competitively with surrounding towns. Um, and we were very happy to be able to do that. And also. And we were very happy to be able to do that, and also include some other stuff to help to, with vacations. And we also controlled some costs by being able to provide uniforms instead of clothing allowances, and some other things were in there. But it it went very well. Just to let everybody know that the food services budget, the revolving account, covers the monies that are spent and pay the employees in this unit, not the operating budget. That just works a little bit differently.
Thank you. So we did have the vote, it was approved, so I'm gonna go ahead and just quickly sign. There are.
One for us, one for them, one for the lawyer, one for.
File cabinet.
The file cabinet. One for the town lawyer, town file cabinet.
I said there was a lot of copies when I just saw three. I was like, I'm six of them. All right, glad that we were able to do that, come to that agreement. Okay, on to the finance discussion, the CLA report. We did get a finalized report back. I think we got that literally hours ago. So we will have that for discussion at our next meeting, I believe it's September 26.
Will that be made available to the public in any way beforehand?
I think we can make that happen.
When will it get made available to the rest of the school committee?
When you get home tonight in the email.
I will be there, I will check my email.
Email tonight?
I I haven't even opened the email yet.
So we're gonna get it from you then, probably, right? Or Christine? You don't know, okay.
I can have Michelle send it out.
Because it's public, correct? This is public. This the this CLA report is public, so there's no reason that it can't go up, and then it's public.
And I'm guessing it'll be put up on the school website at some point within the next, the student hall is probably pretty quick, so. Figure that out. All right, Special Education Advisory Committee. I wanted to put this back on the agenda so that this stays up on the radar. I know once we came up with the budget issue, this kind of got put on the sideburner.
Unfortunately.
Unfortunately, and I want to make sure that this stays up fresh in our minds, so that we can keep this, keep this going. I did have, as as some of you will recall, we had a special education review. We got those results back. We want to make sure that we're being active on it, that we're implementing some of those suggestions, and that we're we're making some changes. I did have Michelle add a couple things to our packets. One, we had already voted to have a, to form an advisory committee to the school committee. So we've added that into the packet, so that we know what kind of what our next steps are going to need to be. I know there was an initial meeting, and she added in the notes to that, where there was a meeting and discussion, I think initially on how to compose that advisory committee. So we want to just take a quick review of that, and I just want us to be thinking of what do we need, what our next step is going to be for this advisory committee, looking at the policies and where we left off.
This this looks like an accurate summary of what we discussed before. With, I I seem to remember that we weren't quite sure about the Select Board and Finance Committee. It's been a long time. Maybe I don't remember it right, but otherwise, this this is what we discussed.
You just remember, there was discussion around getting this outline of steps, right? It's kind of the next steps, kind of saying, really high level, what is the, you mean, next steps, or kind of what is the the committee, advisory committee going to do? And then we talked about the composition, but then no one was actually, we don't have, if I remember correctly, there's not any, either, there's not people assigned.
No, correct.
In total, yeah, that's, oh, oh, there's, yeah.
This was a discussion of what we, to gather all of our input, and then the next step would have been.
To assign.
To assign.
To assign it, yeah.
And as for volunteers too, right, for some of the other roles, because there's a lot of roles here. Did we decide on all these roles on the committee?
And I think there was some feedback, a public comment made about whether or not Select Board or Finance Committee should be on there. I feel like the impetus was we want to make sure we build a good relationship, and just so that they, not that they're controlling the thing we do, but like, they ultimately, in collaboration with the town, we want to make sure that people are aware of what we're trying to accomplish and build support. So it could be one, it could be one, either one, it could just be an invitation, I don't know if we, like, how we structure that, or never resolved how we should structure that.
Well, there were various suggestions made. One of the ones I made was that we invite them, and if they can spare the time, they come, if they can't, they can't.
But they don't necessarily need to be appointments as much as the other ones.
Right. And then the other thing was, this is what we've thought, can we somehow get feedback from the educators about whether the makeup would really represent them as well?
Well, and I think one of the issues that we were running into is the the general size of this committee. It is very large. But I'm not sure if there was a way to also pare it down.
So even without, it's about 15 people without the Select Board and Finance Committee.
And when you're trying to get a committee together.
We can cross off the Humanities Director right now. Because she's now the Assistant Superintendent for Teaching, Acting Superintendent, interim. You're right, Ms. Cormier, or who said that, to pare it down.
I don't, I wonder if if Lynn wants to have a conversation with our CPAC president and vice president, or and and maybe review this with them, and see if collectively they might come up with a committee now that, you know, things have changed a little bit from when we were putting this together. Because I think there there are some things that you have some ideas of, some things that you'd like to review as well.
So I've met with them, well, I have, I have spoken with the CPAC Chair and Co-Chair, you know, a few different times. And we met together, we talked sort of, you know, just sort of who we are and what we're gonna do. One of the co-chairs did ask about this committee and sort of where it stood. And so I'm happy to go back and see about where, how they envision it, and talk about my experience about how, you know, CPAC has operated within a district in the past, and see what they're thinking.
Could another approach be, just because I do feel like we, I know everyone feels the same, we've been talking about this for a long time, and just other, this is superseded by other events. Would there be value in just getting a core team together, so we can actually just start to get some traction?
This was the, this is the result of the core team.
That's what we were trying to do.
But but is the core team, like, we even just assign, like, let's just, maybe core is the wrong word, but the, I don't know, the the starter team, right? And get people on the team, whether it's the school committee, CPAC, Lynn, and we just kind of get that together and start?
Typically, there's a school committee member that interfaces regularly with CPAC, so that's a once a month meeting.
But this is more than, this is an advisory committee that's implementing the findings of the review. So it's, I mean, this is more than just a relationship with CPAC. And this is, this is, this is a reform of of our, I mean, essentially working with, reforming our special education, how we, how we view it within the district, how we're implementing it.
I'm just trying to say that there's some, just like, just get the initial, just let's get started with, get some people on the team, even if we don't do the full 15, to get started, and then have those conversations with CPAC and try to put, but at least start to get some more tim- movement. I'm just trying to.
Well, an opinion?
Yes.
Right, so I mean, that was what we were trying to do, right, and it got overcome by events, right? So now here we are, it's September, it's time to to actually get going. I don't think it's that difficult. I I like the idea of Lynn going back and and, you know, there's some new faces. See how how CPAC feels about whether they still like this idea, whether they want to give some feedback on this idea, then bring it back here and let's create it. You know, let's just get it.
Well, it's been created, we just have to appoint the people.
Oh, yeah, actually, that's right. We did vote on, right?
We voted on it.
It's there.
So it's there, so we just really actually just need to make appointments and.
Can we start our appointment? Let's, are we ready to appoint the the two school committee, and just get it moving? I feel like it's just one of these things, just to start to get traction. I mean, if that's not the right step, then fine, but I'm just, like, how do we move it?
I think this is the advisory committee, which means that the Chair doesn't appoint, right? We as a committee appoint, if I remember right?
I believe we, as a committee, appoint.
So if you put it on, so Madam Chair, I suggest if you put it on the next agenda, people can give you, you know, their input, and who who might like to serve, and who they might like to see in these appointments, and then we can discuss and make it happen.
So is the, I I just, I want to clarify what we're thinking about. So we're thinking about just appointing the school committee members at this point? Or are we looking at also looking to appoint other members to this advisory committee at this time?
Well, I I like Ms. Cormier's suggestion. I think putting, like, certainly whoever the superintendent is gonna put on from the administration team, and since there's a requirement for, you know, a general ed teacher, in fact, I think we talked about a principal, but that doesn't seem to be here.
I feel like some of these we will be able to do quicker.
But but her idea of, you know, a couple of people from the administration, one or two people from CPAC, one or two people from the school committee, and then they can decide, or at least come back to the committee as a whole and recommend, because there's a trade off between breadth of representation and then the management of the committee itself. And I like her idea of letting some of the people that are gonna be on it in any case, helping think that through for us.
And I, the thing I want to understand too, is we have a Special Education Review Advisory Committee draft. Do we need to, are we, can we piecemeal this? Or do we need to make this advisory committee a first and second read?
I'm sorry, a first and what?
We already could have done the advisory committee, but the the steps, the outlining the steps, the when, so specifically, when we're looking at the policy, we are to clearly instruct the length of time each member is to serve, when they are to, when the committee is to receive reports. You know, there's certain things that, instructions that are supposed to be given, clearly, clear instructions that are supposed to be given to to appointed members.
So maybe for the next meeting, then, we need to, Madam Chair, you you should put together some of what those instructions would be, and we can do a first read as well as, as well as a first read of some possible appointments. And then we could, at the meeting after that, we can do a second read.
All right. I think that would be the next step to go then. Is everybody in agreeance with that? We'll put that on for a first read for next meeting?
Yes.
Get moving. People, yeah, people in there, even if it's not, everybody will start to see more movement outside of.
And then we could always appoint more people as we move forward. But it's it's getting some steps moving. All right, thank you. All right, the superintendent search update. Last we left off, I know we had thrown around some ideas, getting some some quotes, getting some listening groups going. I am going to be meeting with the town manager. Scheduling has been a little bit off right now, but we do have, going, are going to be meeting next week. However, in a meeting with Ms. Lathrop, we have, and and Mr. Hicks, we realize that there are positions within the district, in addition to the superintendent, that we are looking for community feedback as well within those listening groups. And we want to be very mindful of the community's time in wanting input in those groups. And to have multiple listening groups is not conserving the time of our community members. So there was the idea of maybe having a single session in which they could go to each position to add feedback on what they'd like to see for a superintendent, or what they'd like to see.
Or a special education director.
Correct.
For a high school principal.
Like, have, yeah, combined session, right?
A one night session.
I spoke with Greg Landry, who's our Director of Personnel and Operations, and I spoke briefly to Melissa about perhaps HR from townside could help too, we could do something at the high school, community members could come. You know, there'd be other opportunities, but it could give you a chance to.
Hear what they have to say.
Yes, absolutely.
And families and community members can come to one night, stop in each room, say the things they want to say.
Ways, like Google Form, to get some feedback as well. Obviously, I feel like our high school students want to have a voice in their next high school principal, so opportunities to hear from the students. I see some smiles, so I think they agree.
So I think that we can work on putting that together, and.
I'm sorry, can you just summarize? That all happened kind of quickly.
Yes. So we're looking on putting back, so putting together a community forum, I guess, where community members can give feedback for, you know, the superintendent, the Director of Special Education, the high school principal, in one location, rather than having separate events in which community members are wanting to contribute, and having to go maybe to three separate nights or three separate events.
So to whom are they giving this? Does that mean that there will be simultaneous windows, as it were? So then they're not gonna be talking to the whole committee? If if at the same place in the same time, there's a place to talk about what you want, what you're thinking about for the high school principal, and another place for the superintendent, then they aren't, whoever, when you, when people do this, they will not be talking to the whole school committee, because none of us can be two places at one time.
I don't, yeah, I don't think they need to talk to the entire school committee for this. I think we're just trying to gather information.
Okay. I just wanted to understand, so they're, and are they doing this publicly or privately?
So we're talking about it would be a public event in which they can come out, but we can also discuss doing, like I said, Google Forms, where we can send that out, where they can fill that out, if they'd like to submit something a little bit more privately, to be able to give some feedback.
But so what, where are we going to be? Each of us will be in one of these places, and we'll, and then we'll come back and share what we learned? None of us are gonna listen to all of these, because it's all at the same time.
I actually think that ideally, none of us are in the rooms at all, and that we have a skilled facilitator run the conversation, run the room, and take really good notes about what people are saying, and bring us back the general themes and ideas that are important. And as a parent, I would actually like to go participate in two of those three discussions, or at least one of them about a special ed director, because that impacts my family so closely. I think this is where we rely on the skilled people we have in HR, both at our, in our building here and at the town side, and find one other person to to run those sessions on our behalf, so that people are even more willing to share. I think that would be really helpful. And then we get to see all the stuff afterwards, as it's been accumulated and sifted through, and we see the big themes and the big ideas that people are speaking to.
Would you do the same with, say, the Finance Committee and the Select Board? Or might it be useful in those cases for them to talk to us as a whole?
In terms of what they would like to see in those positions? I think they would be welcome to attend a listening session as community members as anybody else would. anybody else would.
But, I guess what I'm wondering about is, isn't their value, I know, leading question, but for them to actually say it to us, as opposed to through somebody else, because then we can talk back and forth with them?
I think in this case, it's actually probably better for them, for those members to do it through somebody else, as in, and my reasoning is, in this case, the, for instance of the superintendent that we're going to hire, that is our job, and they have, they have an opinion, but their opinion means to me the same as, sorry, select board and finance committee, but their opinion means the same to me as any other member of the community, and I would not, I think we should give them, they should be treated and given the, the same type of opportunity to do that sharing. They're members of the community, they have a right to share that with us, but they should do so in the same way as other citizens and other members of the community, because this is our job to do it.
I, I hear you, I'm not quite sure I follow the logic, that it's our job, and that's why they should do it indirectly as opposed to directly.
They should be given the exact same opportunity as any other member of the community to share with us, their, their opinions should matter no more or less, and a private audience with us to share their ideas elevates their voice a little bit more.
Well, they can't be a private.
Whatever audience with us alone gives them a different opportunity to share with us instead of other members of the public, and want to be the same.
And what about teachers?
I think we also design, like, members of the community, for them can attend as parents, and I think also we have, we should.
Can't they attend as teachers?
Sure.
And I, I had, I had more of a sentence, and we should also do, because that will ultimately be their leader, we should have a, a listening session with them specifically, and I think that's not run by, I think again, that's run by a neutral party, and I think we do the same with the student body across all levels, and for, in particular with the high, with the high schools principal, we do the same with student council and with all other students, I think it's, we as leaders should not be doing the, that part, we need to get, have people that we rely on gather the information for us.
I think we were trying to be very cognizant of people's time, and that realizing we have lots of large positions to fill, so this is one way to get some people's voices, we didn't want to just bombard, I didn't want to send a survey about a special ed director, send a survey about high school principal, this is one way of gathering some information, but we'll also, I will also go to the high school faculty and have, and sit with them at a faculty meeting and hear their desires, I'll also find a way to reach out to the students, I'm hoping the students that are here can brainstorm with me some ways to do that, looks like they're willing to do that.
They want to do that.
Right, I'm assuming will.
They want to tell us right now.
Also, reach out to CPAC and ask CPAC to run, to do something at a CPAC meeting to get some information, but we're just thinking, we don't, we want to give the larger community, because I do think that a school system belongs to the community as well, and there may be people who don't even have children in the district, who want to have, I would think you might want to have an opinion about who is running special education, because it may affect your, you know, lots of your finances and tax rates and property value, all the things in your home, I'm thinking a community member who might want to know who is the superintendent of schools, they might want to give an opinion, so it's just one way, I think you're going to have to come up with lots of other ways, much to like you're talking of, speaking with staff and, and other things.
So is it, is it your thought that when somebody comes, will he or she have her five or 10 minutes in private with this person, or?
No, this would be something, as Mr. Hicks said, that would be run by skilled facilitators who know, who are human resources, who will have a small group and they'll give people an opportunity, it could be something as, just, I don't want to say simple, but you could have chart paper up and be like, you know, what qualifications are you looking for in a superintendent, what are your concerns about, you know, a superintendent, what are three, the, three, you know, what are three most important things for, to you about a superintendent? It could be a small group with either your cards or chart paper, it's more of a, just a community.
So, there's, there's a, what, I, I was wondering whether there would be an advantage to doing these in each school, I understand it gets more complex, but whether you would get more parents if it was at their local school, and whether, since.
I'll be honest, I don't think we, I think there will be doing some things at schools, and I think there's opportunities, I do think that people also really like the opportunity to fill something out online, I think if you send out a Google Form that gives them an opportunity to fill something out online, the same thing for students, they're probably, not every student's going to want to, you know, sit with a superintendent and tell them what they think, but they will probably go online and fill something out if I send it to them, so, for a matter of time, I don't know that we have enough manpower, to be honest with you, woman power, to get to all of the schools and do all of those things.
And I also think when we're doing a concert, a, a, a joint effort like this, you're getting the people who want to come out, I think if you're going school by school, it's very difficult to get a large group of people who want to come out, I mean, for example, look at PTO meetings, they have a very, very difficult time individually in schools getting people who want to get involved and come out, I think when you have a centralized location, then you're going to get the people who want to come, who want to voice their opinions, and you're making, you're conserving time amongst everyone in making that effort.
I do like that, I, I would just make one suggestion, that it, it either have two, two nights, so to get, people have the, you know, if they really can't make it one night to have the opportunity, or if that doesn't work, like, like Ms. Lathrup was suggesting, some sort of online method where, all right, I couldn't make it to the big open forum, but I really want to give you my thoughts, here they are.
Right.
Just to cover that.
No, absolutely.
You know, because somebody had work, traveled, or whatever, they can't make it.
So, I think that's a really important thing, that at least two nights, which does mean you could be at, at least at two different schools.
Well, I think, I mean, even if we can't do two nights, at least another form, like a Google Form or some other, some other way to participate. So I think the next step is then we can coordinate that and come up with a facilitator for each of those events.
He's interested and willing to pull that together for you.
Okay. And we can also, I can also have another conversation with MCAS, because I think that's something that they have a facilitator too, where they're very experienced in running those, and knowing what information to gather.
Well, MASC said that they would actually do it, at least some of it for nothing.
Right, right, that's what I.
So at that price, we could afford it.
Right, exactly.
We talked about before, right, looking for, you're doing the superintendent search, is something that we can't get wrong.
Right.
So where we, so where we can get, you know, professional facilitators, and we're not doing anything new, other people have done this before.
Well, none of us have ever done this.
Well, none of us, none of us have.
I would rather have somebody who has done it.
Yes, so using the experts is so important.
Yeah, and I think for, from my perspective also, as a, in terms of like, people that come and are willing to share their ideas, I want to make sure that as a member who's in, looking at the information, that I see them all the same, like, so if someone comes and I have a relationship with them previously, I don't want to hear their ideas more than others, I want them to, so I, I sort of don't want to know who's saying the things.
It's an unbiased view.
I just want to know the thing and not the person it's coming from, because that helps me understand the themes and the ideas better, I actually prefer not to be part of the facilitation or discussion or, or presence at the night, other than say, welcome, here, you can go and have the fun, I think that's important for me.
Okay, so we can take the next steps on that. All right, let's move on to school building committee updates. What do you have, middle school?
Yeah, unfortunately, I was not able to attend the middle school building committee meeting this past week, because I had to run a faculty meeting in Chelsea until, until it started, but my understanding, and Ms. Lathrup, you were there, so you will correct me when I am wrong, school, it looks beautiful and clean and lovely and is being used, the, there are some punch list items that they are making their way through and getting done as quickly as possible, so that it is even more useful, it is a safe functional space that kids can learn in, and we're just trying to get all those X's crossed and, T's crossed and the I's dotted, we're on schedule for the full completion, remember that this was a, a mid, late point of the project, we are on schedule to have it all done by, by January, and right now we are under budget, which is great, not as under budget as I would like it to be, but under budget nonetheless, and that's where we hope to finish in January, and I think the big fun thing that's going to happen in, at the end, is that we're going to have some, a new curtain and new lights and everything in the auditorium over there, it's going to be great, and a new lift to get kids up to the stage that need it.
Correct, right, correct.
We should donate those old lights to a museum.
The museum, I think, I don't think they can be used anymore, or if they're safe, or to ever.
There, there's some serious history in there.
There's some history, then we want to just put it away.
We, we had a delay in some of the Epson projectors, the projectors, in order to cast, so I think there, we're still waiting, I think it was four, because of Tuesday, we were still waiting on.
So, thank you for the patience of, to those individuals and those teachers that don't yet have that, I am, that's frustrating.
Pretty amazing though, only four projectors.
I think it's four, but somebody will text me if I'm wrong.
But we also have like, brand new carpet in the library, and the floors are shiny and new.
Yeah, good carpet in the auditorium, and yeah, everything looks great.
Kittredge, so, so the, I think I already reported on this, but the preliminary design program, the PDP, was submitted on, on August eighth, it's like, literally six hundred pages, but if anybody would like a copy, I have one, it's pretty comprehensive, good report, summarized all the work that, that, you know, that the owner, project manager did, and the, and the, I'm going to forget the acronym for the other folks, the, the, the folks involved in, in putting this together, so the next step is, is like a thirty-week block in the time, time schedule for putting together something called the PSR, which is the next phase, it's, stands for Preferred Schematic Report, there is a firm deadline for submitting that, so we don't miss a cycle in, in the, in the development of the MASC budgets and things like that, that are going to contribute to this, so there's a hard deadline of February twenty-seventh, twenty-five, where that has to be submitted, or we, you know, or we have like, a big delay, so, assuming that is met, and then the approval would come on April twenty-third, the schematic design, the real design would begin at that point, so during this thirty-week interval, a lot of things are going to happen, there's going to be, basically they're going to be going back around to talk to all the stakeholders, right, and say, okay, here was our giant, for lack of a better word, our cauldron of ideas, we boiled them down to this central idea or two, we're starting to plan based on that, give us additional feedback, so there hasn't been a meeting since, I think, since that, right before that August eighth report was submitted, so that's all I have for tonight, but there'll be a lot going on shortly.
They do a preliminary thing, and then a final one is due by April, is what you said?
No, no, the, the final report has to be submitted by the end of February, and then their schedule for approvals would have the approval happen on April twenty-third.
Is that when we would get a first glimpse of what it could look like?
Well, I don't know, if, if you want a glimpse of what it could look like, I'll give you, I'll send you the PDF.
Please do.
But there's a lot in there, but, you know, all the arrows kind of point to the, to a new, a new structure, not revamping the old ones, just to briefly summarize, right, there are all these different options, you know, there are five different major options, but, you know, all the arrows end up pointing to, basically, starting over.
So it sounds like there's a lot, a very important thirty-week period coming up, a lot to get done, who's responsible for making sure that we know exactly what all those things are and that they all get done, because I'm assuming it's one of these things, we can't wait to do our homework at the last minute, but there's a lot happening, like, so there's a, a company that we've got managing that for us?
Yes, yes, the owner, the owner, project manager, they're called, yeah.
Is that Collier?
That is, I always get them mixed up, I think that is Collier, yeah.
Yep, they're keeping us right on track.
And they were the OPM for the middle school as well.
They meet with Mr. Cushing, and because there's still some focus groups that are happening at Kittredge School, but yes.
And they, right now, they're confident that we're on track for completion?
Oh yeah, and our committee, our building committee meets, will start to meet probably like, every two or three weeks from this point forward, basically, there wasn't a whole lot to do, they couldn't do a whole lot between early August and now, essentially, but now, everybody's back, everything's here, people they need to talk to are, are back and available.
Thank you. All right, we have curriculum presentations.
Investigating history presentation, and then.
And I actually am humbled that I, I am coming with you with some updates, as we develop our district improvement plan and our school improvement plans, I wanted to give you updates and a preview about our curriculum going forward, but I'm actually joined by two experts who will, I'm sure, love the fact that I'm calling them experts, but one of them is in the room, Terry is going to come join us at the table, Terry Schmidt is an amazing fifth grade teacher at the Thompson Elementary, and our other teacher expert is Rebecca Deschanel, who's our seventh, who's teacher of seventh grade at NAMHS, is also the curriculum, oh, sorry, department head coordinator there, and Rebecca, I hope you don't mind, is recovering from being really sick this week, but really wanted to join us, so she's Google leading in, so.
Feel better.
Exactly, exactly, hi. So thank, I said Rebecca, you're off the hook, you're sick, and she was like, no, I really want to come.
No, I'm coming.
She's like, no, I'm coming, and I'm texting her saying, I'm sorry, you know what I mean, we're running, you know, we're running long, and she's writing, no, this is really interesting, so, there we go, exactly.
Ten minutes late.
Exactly, yes, exactly, and so, but it's, they're teachers and they're really tired and it's late, right, exactly, and so.
That's our bedtime.
Exactly, so, these two lovely professionals are going to join me tonight, as I give you some preview for what's coming ahead, and they're going to speak specifically to investigating history, which is a curriculum that some of us are trying, and so, awesome, Terry teaches fifth grade at the Thompson School, and actually brought me this curriculum because she was one of the first pilot teachers in the state to use it, and so, really exciting stuff, so thank you, thank you, thank you, I'm going to give you a little background first about, you're going to hear a lot from me, so of course, everything's aligned with our strategic plan, so that's always like, a given, but we're lined up with consistent rigorous curriculum, equity for all students, and targeted professional practice, what I'm going to talk to you tonight probably falls most under a consistent rigorous curriculum, that we want kids across North Andover to have a common experience, depend, not, that isn't dependent on their school or their teacher, that, the idea that, you know, we, a North Andover education is a North Andover education, and we can, you know, that doesn't vary, consistent, rigorous, you're going to hear a lot from me this year about HQIM, High Quality Instructional Materials, for those of you who are more like tech orientated, Cara always says HQMI, like HDMI, and so the idea that like, but it's HQIM, High Quality Instructional Materials, and I'm not going to read you what's on the slide, but everything's linked in your, in the agenda, the idea that there's a growing body of research that curriculum materials make a difference in student outcomes, and so there's a number of studies here around that it's comparable to over, having high-quality materials that aren't written necessarily by the teacher, that they're written and vetted, field-tested through sources, could be comparable to over half a year of additional learning, about 1.5 times the difference between an average teacher and one at the seventy-fifth percentile, greater than the difference between a new teacher and one with three years of experience, and that also reflects more equitable access for students who are traditionally marginalized in schools, and so, there's a body of research growing around the fact that using high-quality instructional materials is really good for student outcomes, the Department of Education or the D E S E is also very much leaning, these slides are actually from them, they're curriculum literacy slides, and so, the idea that curriculum literacy is something that we're getting a lot of guidance from at the state level, I was investigating my grants, because that's something I like to do, but I was looking into a literacy grant that's coming on the horizon for thirty-seven million dollars across the state, and you can't qualify if you don't use HQIM in, in your school district, and so mu- much of, this research is very powerful in that most of the state, this is the direction that leaders like us are getting from the state, but this does mean that there's a shift in thinking, from teachers creating their own curriculum, to effectively evaluating and skillfully implementing curriculum, and that's different, there's a difference between being a teacher and being a curriculum writer, they're two different jobs, we, for a long time, we've expected our teachers to do both, a body of research, a growing body of research tells us that kids do better when we let the teachers teach, and we let the curriculum writers write, and so, but that is a shift, and I'm not going, I want to be transparent, and that that does bring up feelings for people, and that teachers have invested a lot of time writing their own curriculum, and that that can be a difficult shift to at some times abandon parts of what they've worked on for years and years and years, in order to adopt something new, and so that is something, so it is a shift in our thinking, in the entire like, educational spec, you know, this is not, this is something that's a shift for people across the state, across the nation, the opportunity myth is another way, is another collection of evidence, these are, you know, five thousand assignments, three, thirty thousand surveys, twenty thousand work samples, but this speaks to students who are traditionally marginalized in our school system, so students. But this speaks to students who are traditionally marginalized in our school system, so students of color, students lower socioeconomic status, students who might be on IEPs. But the idea that there are four core resources at the heart of high quality academic experiences, and the biggest one being grade appropriate assignments. So, if you have high quality instructional materials, you are more likely to have high quality assignments for students and higher expectations for students, because you're, because these things are field tested, vetted, feedback revised, that sort of thing. So, stronger assignments or higher levels of engagement could be equivalent to an additional two months of learning. So, you can see, these are things that are like very, very powerful. In most places, so, the idea that, of course, this is for your reference, I'm not going to read you the whole thing, but what I think is most powerful about it is that students who are traditionally marginalized or students of classrooms that had no grade level assignments, students of color or traditionally marginalized had less opportunity to even try high quality curriculum or grade level assignments. So, it's the idea that students are more likely to have success if we give them more difficult things to do, and in some cases, students aren't given the opportunity to do more difficult things. And we never know if we're going to do the difficult things if we never try the difficult things. And so, see, this is just a collective body of research that we're finding over time. We want, but is a shift, it is a shift in thinking. We want teachers to spend less time building lessons from scratch. I read something that some teachers, like an average teacher, might spend eight to ten hours a week like researching, you know, material for their lessons. We want them to be using that time to be thinking about the students in front of them, giving them the material. Certainly, internet for materials and activities, and more time on internalizing content, analyzing and acting on student data, and differentiating lessons for individual students. So, this is, it is a shift in thinking, though. We want, I want to call that out. I want to be really mindful about that.
Is that a new shift in thinking?
Relatively, I would think relatively so, yes. For a long time, like the high quality instructional materials didn't exist. And so, and at some levels, they still don't. So, as far as like the way the state is going, we have a lot of really solid, high quality instructional materials, and there's like an organization called EdReports, which is like consumer reports for educational materials. And then Massachusetts has their own curate, which is like a teacher group that vets curriculum. And so, that is relatively new, the idea that we can like be, we can reasonably, we can be assured that this is high quality curriculum, this has met all of our standards. And we have more evidence at K to eight than we do nine to twelve. I feel at the nine to twelve level, we're still exploring, setting up like, our department head at North Andover High sits on the curate committee for ELA for nine to twelve. And so, but there have, we have pretty established high quality resources, K to eight so far. So, I would say in the last eight to ten years.
Just before Ms. Cormier asked you a question, you, you said something that, like you go back one slide, that seemed to me was really important, and you went over it very quickly. It's probably, it struck me as important enough to go over it just a little bit more slowly.
Sure, absolutely. So, the idea that we want teachers spending less time writing the lessons from scratch and more time teaching the material that we have to meet the student needs that are in front of you. And so, again, teaching is different from curriculum writing. We would like to give you, I would like to give teachers the recipe so that they can adjust for whatever needs they have in front of them. We don't want them writing every recipe from scratch. And so, they can internalize the content, they can go deeper in their own content, like these teachers will tell you, I think it's very rigorous content, I never taught things that were as rigorous as they're teaching, analyzing, acting on student data, where this teacher is now freed up to collect student data and then differentiate as necessary, pull small groups, and then differentiating lessons and activities for individual students. If the core curriculum is written, the teacher can then spend his or her energy using, like, creating scaffolds, pulling small groups, you're not writing the lesson from scratch. And so, you, the teacher is freed up, and we get better outcomes for kids.
It occurs to me that the last two points on the right are kind of the same, or very similar to what the Urban, whatever their name was, group reported to us.
The opportunity.
They were saying that, they said it in a more elegant way, I suppose, but that, that we want to put more emphasis on making sure regular classrooms meet more of students' needs. And that's what I think you're saying here, is that you want, because the teacher doesn't have to sort of figure out where she's going to get basic data, unlike how the Civil War started, but rather, she has this rich source of information about and expectations about what, and then she can spend her, do I understand that right?
Absolutely, and also like to, to make the point about like our special education review, where the idea that like tiers aren't locations, and we need to be able to support students in tier one. It's hard to intervene your way out of a bad tier one curriculum. If you don't have like a basis of a really solid curriculum that we know is vetted, researched, and there's a base to it, it's hard to intervene your way out of that. It's hard to meet kids' needs if we don't have a solid, I don't want to keep making like nutritional analogies, because that's not really my thing, but like if you don't have like a solid nutritional diet to begin with, it's hard to like then take supplements to try to figure out. And so, the idea that like, it ties into our special education goals too, in that like we're trying to meet everybody's needs, and we have a better shot at doing that if we have solid tier one curriculum.
I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I think what you're saying is that, or at least what I'm hoping you're saying is that the teacher is going to see what the expectations are, and she's going to be thinking about how she needs to modify this to meet individuals' needs.
Absolutely.
So, it doesn't necessarily mean that everybody's going to do exactly the same thing. It means the teacher uses this rich trove and then figures out how I'm going to divide the students into groups and make.
It's a guide, not a script.
Yeah, okay, that makes a lot of sense.
Absolutely, so it's a place, it's a guide.
So, there's still room for maybe supplementing the materials, or is it very strictly sticking with the curriculum that's there?
I think the, to be completely transparent, the curriculum is so voluminous that there's not a ton of time to like be supplementing, but for the most part, like, if in a curriculum there might be a hundred and fifty to a hundred and sixty days of lessons, and so, and there's a hundred and eighty-two days in the school year, or whatever it is that we work. So, there is some room, but actually, I think our teachers generally at the beginning will struggle with pacing, trying to finish, complete what's in there. Rebecca's nodding, I can see out of the corner of my eye, like, complete what's in there, rather. But what we don't want, what we want is for teachers to have too much content, so that they don't have to go searching for other things. But the idea that like we can start with this really strong content, and we also have teachers who have built scaffolds, or they might redesign an assignment, redesign a worksheet, redesign an activity to better meet the needs of students. Teachers can spend their energy doing that, and then we pool those resources, so that other teachers can use them in order, in order to do that. And so, supplement in a way.
But that's what I'm wondering, if they're able to move that around a little bit to better meet the needs of students, or are they, they're stuck in this, in the script, or if they can reword the script.
Can I also add, because I've done it for two, three years now, the first year, we just did two units, and we talked about it, and we looked at student work, and we brought stuff back. And then the next year, they had the teachers collaborate, and we, we did the differentiating. We made more things to differentiate. We got lists down, we talked about ELL students, we talked about special ed students, and there was just so much more that was added to it that was all teacher created. And we came in with teachers making more lessons, and to that, that was the benefit of doing it from the first year up until, for two years, we worked on it. So, we came back and said, we did some other lessons and came back and said, well, this doesn't meet the needs of, the diverse needs of my class. I had a lot of ELL students that year. And with the collaboration of teachers from across the state, we sat down and made more lessons to add that teachers can pool from it. So, you don't have to use all the lessons, but you could say, oh, this works for my class. So, there's a lot of content. I don't know if it's the same for the upper grades, but I know in fifth grade, since we were, those beginning years, there's a lot of content that teachers, it was great to meet teachers from all over the state, and just, we talked about what and how we could use it in our classrooms, and just like there was, you know, I don't want to talk too much, but, I mean, I was just thinking, like, there was a lesson. There was a lesson about borders, and we were talking about Lewis and Clark and how the, you know, they were going across, and there were no borders at the time, and then the teacher came up, well, there's a book called Borders where kids can make borders to more understand that, and that reached the ELL students, the special ed students, where they can sit down and really work on that content. So, this was really teachers who've been creative for all these years, being able to add to the curriculum was kind of an exciting process to be a part of, and see it the next year where they added it to the books and the curriculum that we ended up with finally. So, it is, there's a lot of differentiated that wasn't there to begin with. Sorry, Kristen, I didn't mean to jump in, I just.
And you're talking in particular about.
I told you she was an expert.
And you're talking in particular about investigating history?
Yes, that's the one I worked on, yes, yeah.
It's so great.
I'm a history buff, that's why I flew for it.
Miss Ando, I, for me, and we're going to get to this, we're going to get there, but, I mean, you talked a little bit about why an HQIM is really important. What is, can you just, like, give us a brief version of like, how do we go about selecting the, let's talk about Wisdom, because that one, I, there's more of them to select from, like, what were the, the questions you were asking and thinking about in choosing that particular HQIM? Because we know there, for ELA, at the K eight level, there, at least K five, there's a very big list of things you could choose from that are, and you need, that are HQIM, and an even bigger list of things that you could choose from that exists but are not, that we immediately cross out. So, like, what's the vetting process that we've gone through to get to this point?
Absolutely. Can I pause on that for a minute?
Are you gonna get there later?
Yes, exactly.
I'll be quiet.
No, 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 thank you, no, they're amazing questions. Rebecca, what are we missing that you might want to add in at this point?
Hi, thank you all for allowing me to zoom in. I hope you can all hear me. I tried to move, so I look less like a couch gremlin. But yeah, so I just want to start by saying that I was so not into the idea of teaching a packaged curriculum that has all the materials together. I remember Stacy Birdsell had caught me at my mailbox one day to kind of just like test the waters, because she knew somebody who was working on it, and my initial response was like fire alarms going off in my head. And then, then the curriculum came out for seventh grade, and it was really good. And Kristen had shared with me the, like, the research on how students are so much further ahead of their peers when they're using non-teacher created materials. And those two things together made me be like, we have to give this a go. We, like, we don't have, like, our students are doing fine, but we don't have the test scores to not give this a try. And so, me and my seventh grade peer teachers, we decided to give it a go. And obviously, we had struggles with timing, that's always a big one, just figuring out how long things take. We were looking for a little bit more assessment and progress markers, so we were doing some creation of that. And it's harder, the work is harder. So, that's an adjustment for teachers in terms of what we need to do to support kids through productive struggle. And it was also a challenge for the students, and to come from not having necessarily that high, like, that as high level of rigor, and that's not to say anything bad about any of their previous teachers. I think they are wonderful teachers and people. It's just, it was a big change for all of us, and that was our hurdle. But after our first big unit assessment, I was really sold because the work the students were able to produce, the conversations that we were having were at a much higher level. So, even though this was a bit of a bitter pill to swallow, I am now like fully on board, I am a convert, because at the end of the day, what we all want for our students, you know, the students who are sitting in on this school committee, who I know some of, and the students that are sitting in my classroom right now, like, I want them to be, like, be able to be competitive and to have all of the doors that they want open for them. And if I can contribute that by, you know, sucking it up a little bit and teaching lessons that somebody else wrote that are better, I'm going to do that. And you know what? Kids, kids liked it, like, they liked the challenge. Not every day was perfect. But we read a whole, like, a whole text, a whole book, as a whole class, and that was a learning, you know, that was a learning curve for me as a teacher, but, you know, they, it, it was good. Like, I, I know that's making, I can sound dumb, but, you know, it was a really good year, and I feel confident in saying that my students learned and thought a lot, and that's all I can want for them.
I'm gonna ask you a follow-up question. You said it was more work, but I'm wondering, as the, you were doing this as a team, right? Your grade level team? And did you find that you could then share the work? That there wasn't as much more work, because each of you did a part of it, and then you all used what each other did?
Yeah, so, we, I'm super fortunate in that me and like the other two seventh grade teachers, they're just lovely, and we work really well together, and, you know, people pull ahead a little bit, and then we all catch up, and we were able to share resources that way. We were also able to really easy loop in all of our special ed teachers and service providers, because I can just send them the links to the materials that are already created, instead of having, instead of having to search through all my, like, my drive folders. And something else that I should mention is I really appreciate the level of transparency that this allows me to have with parents. All of the materials are open source, they are available online. So, when parents have questions, when they want to know more about the curriculum, like even today, I had a great phone conversation with a parent about, she had some questions about class, and I was able to just send her all the links to, like, the link to the investigating history website, and say like, please look through this, this is what we're using. I want you to know what's happening, like, in class, because I think that transparency with our community members and families is, is always a good, always important.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
So, of our wonderful teachers, and also of you, Ms. Ando. What, well, I think also when you said, comment first, is like when you said it's harder, I think what's important for me to remember is that it's different, and it's also grade level appropriate. And what, what matters to me about that is when Desia has reviewed this and said it's grade level appropriate, that also means this is what they are expecting kids to be able to read and to work with when they go to take an important assessment like MCAS. Like that, like that, this is the level of work that kids are going to see there, in terms of like challenging readings, and we, we would be remiss if we don't give students an opportunity to do that, practice that on a daily basis. Not that we only ever want to do MCAS, but like that, this is what they determine is like meets those standards. I think that matters a lot.
Do you want to have the expectations?
Absolutely. For the two teachers, like, how is, you said it was really good. How is it different than the type of work you were doing with students in social studies beforehand? Like, how has this shifted the way students look, think, and work and think about the act of doing history?
And I'm gonna hold on, I'm gonna interrupt.
Are we getting there later?
Let me give you a little bit more background about investigating history itself.
Okay, hold, I'll hold on.
Hold, hold your thoughts. So, in 2018, Massachusetts adopted a new history and social studies framework. That's okay, we're good. And so, and so, we've had to adjust instructions particularly since then, since 2018. And so, because there was not, everybody kept asking the DESE, what do you recommend we use for social studies? What do you recommend we use for social studies? And because there was nothing appropriate to recommend, the state did this really interesting move where they wrote their own. So, they decided to develop, DESE developed a collaboration with teachers in history scholars in accurate, culturally responsive, and inclusive curriculum that's also open source, meaning every link is online, just like Rebecca said, it's online, you know, we have printing costs, but for the most part, like, it's online. And so, it has been developed and like vetted through teachers like this, that we've then moved on. Here, the, again, I'm not going to read these all to you, but lead partners, including Tufts University, University of Massachusetts Boston, Boston University, so the idea that we are growing and developing a curriculum, that's still changing. There's still, you know what I mean, we're, they're still making changes to it. So, just a couple timelines. So, Terry, I think, started in 2021, but it might have been before that, in grade five at the Thompson. In 2223, we had some additional grade five teachers come on board. Last year, we had grade seven, and then an addition, some additional grade five teachers gave it a try. Last year, we had grade seven and then an addition, some additional grade five teachers gave it a try. About 70% of our grade five teachers tried at least one unit, there's four altogether. And this year, we're piloting, last year, we had some teachers pilot in grades three and four. This year, we have additional grade three and four pilots. Eventually, the program, the investigating history curriculum will run grades three to seven. And so, we participated in two grants, $28,384 and $32,000 between FY24 and F25. And this is paid for stipends for teachers professional development and materials for the new program. These are competitive grants that I applied for because we had teachers who were interested in doing the work. And there was time outside of the day that we were able to compensate them for, for the extra planning and for extra work. And possibly buy them materials or bring in professional development providers. Again, we talked about like the civics MCAS is new or is coming up. In 2020 to 2023, we had a pilot test that we're giving in eighth grade. We had a field test last spring and we anticipate that this will be the first operational year of the civics MCAS. Like Mr. Hicks said, not everything's about MCAS, but we are going to have a benchmark or a accountability point around social studies. And so the idea that having aligned curriculum would also benefit us in that way. I shared with you in the spring about some beautiful things that were happening in the fifth and seventh grade, these are slides from there. And then I was going to ask the beautiful teachers, just like Mr. Hicks did, about successes, challenges and supports in the program. And so, sorry to make you wait, I just wanted to give everybody a little bit more about like the genesis of how, where investigating history came from. Exactly, awesome.
One of the things I think it's important to say is for fifth grade, this social studies program fits completely with wit and wisdom. And a lot of the way they're doing writing prompts and the way they're doing just even the curriculum, the curriculum and wit and wisdom is all about. First one I've been teaching is about the Lewis and Clark's expedition. I remember last year when I taught the wit and wisdom and then we got to that and the social studies, they like, oh, that's the Nez Perce tribe, oh, I, and they were able to totally connect. And a lot of the writing assignments and everything have gotten so much easier for me just because the kids are coming up doing wit and wisdom. Now I'm doing the social studies that has very similar types of prompts or writing responses or even just interactions. The kids do mock debates and things like that of everything that's happened. So it fits very nicely with the wit and wisdom in fifth grade, I don't, you know, I can't say for everything. But I still think that reading and writing and that rigor has really, has really been, I can see it and I saw it last year quite a bit and I'm seeing it, I'm looking at it this year. And now I know to say to the kids, keep an eye on this tribe, you know, this Nez Perce tribe, you're going to see them again and see, be able to connect to it later. But a lot of the writing and the standards, when Jackie Taylor had seen it at first, she was like, wow, this like really, it's the same, you know, we have slides. It, it's very similar to it, so the kids are, it's just, you can just see they're doing really well with it and I've just really, I don't know what to say, I'm not. I get nervous in front of it, she knows, Kristen, when Kristen, when Kristen asks me to do this, I'm like, oh, I'm great with kids, but adults, I'm not sure, I'll lose my thoughts, so I'm just going to.
You're our expert, you know it better than we do, and so. Exactly, thank you, Terry. Anything you want to add Rebecca or any other questions at this point?
Yeah, I mean, I would like to address the question that was asked by, I'm so sorry, I don't know the committee member's name.
Oh, it's Joe Hicks.
Oh, okay. Like what makes it good and I want to piggyback off of what our great fifth grade teacher said. And it's, you know, literacy is roughly 30% of our standards for social studies. We are not just as history teachers and geography teachers responsible for teaching content. We are also responsible for making sure that our students are critical consumers of media and writing. And are able to produce their own thoughts and ideas. And I'm going to steal this quote that my vice principal says to me all the time, that our job is to teach kids how to think and not what to think. And I think this curriculum provides a really good structure for presenting students with challenging, like, sources to read from, to understand, to process. And is then asking them to take all of that, and I mean tons and tons of information that they have to keep track of and synthesize. And then produce their own writing and their own opinions on it. And I think that, that's what makes it, as I said before, my dumb word, good.
And what are they, what's, what's the topic right now at the beginning of the year in seventh grade, I ask selfishly?
Yeah, the topic right now is South and Central Asia. There is a real heavy focus on historical developments that happened particularly in India. So right now, we were just starting off with some math activities that start the curriculum off. There are like days two and three, I want to say, whereas day one asks students to think about what, what are influencers? What types of things influence people, what types of things influence them? As a way to begin thinking about the ways that geography and religion and leadership, which are some of the big kind of buckets that the unit content falls into is all about.
And just to note that this is like perfectly aligned to what the state frameworks are asking, are telling us what we should be doing because it's written by.
The people who wrote the frameworks.
The people who wrote the frameworks.
Right, so the people wrote the frameworks, so then they wrote this curriculum and then they're also crafting the assessment, so it's all aligned. It's unique, in ELA and math, this is not something that exists, like, we very rarely have a curriculum that's written at this level. And so, but absolutely.
Okay, a related question, Kristen, on the, in the earlier slides here, you're talking about how it's proven that, you know, when you're getting the grade level appropriate challenges, you meet them. So does that mean that we weren't doing that before? And what is that research based on the state of Massachusetts, the United States, like, what's the context of that?
So the opportunity myth where most of that came from was about five diverse school systems, you know, thousands of lessons and so this collection over time. I'm not, I don't know if definitely we weren't always, but the standard changed in 2018. And so it took time to figure, you two catch up with that, if that makes sense. And so, our history and social studies standards were revised, I think in 2003 prior to 2018. So expectations, the world, and also our literacy standards changed as well. And so, yes and no, to answer your question.
Probably part of the problem was things were out of date, right? So they weren't grade level because they just sort of lost track of where the grade level should be. All right, I was just curious if that, you know, like, what to draw, what conclusion to draw from those statements?
Or like when you're using a high quality instructional material, it's easier to, easier to hold the standard to the grade level standard. Because you're not writing the lessons yourself, you're, you're using grade level, grade level lessons and so, but the standards, the standards do change.
Okay, thank you.
Am I hearing you correctly that, well, actually, as you just said, that because in the old way, the teacher's kind of working on her own. Now, she's more likely to actually be teaching at a somewhat higher level. And that the result of this is teachers are teaching at a higher level and seeing students perform better.
I think that's what our people are telling us.
I don't want to put words, that's what I'm hearing, I want to make sure I'm hearing it right.
And I think like our teachers are sharing with us the successes and the struggles with that, that when, with that, the successes and the struggles with that. That when it is more rigorous for students and students aren't always used to that level of rigor as well. And so, but we're seeing that when we raise the expectation, they can do better.
Yes, that's what I was, I mean, in the end, actually, that's what I said when I spoke to everybody, that when you raise expectations generally and help students get there, then everybody's happier. But of course, if you, if you don't know in advance that's going to happen, I can see it would be uncomfortable, but as it does unfold, it's very rewarding.
I feel very inspired by these two tonight, exactly, it seems, it seems very rewarding. Excellent, yes.
Were there no sixth grade teachers piloting this program?
We had a, we had one or two sixth grade teachers that were using some of the materials. But the sixth grade was not interested in piloting last year when Rebecca and her team took it on.
Third and fourth grade pilot.
Third and fourth grade, we have a team at Thompson, we have a team. Exactly, Terry has pretty much sold everybody at the Thompson, but we also have a team at Atkinson. And then we have a major fifth grade team at Sargent, who actually piloted fifth grade and also like wrote a curriculum, wrote a curriculum guide. But took the curriculum guide and made it in an easier format for teachers, if that makes sense. And so they did some additional work there, but Thompson and Atkinson for the most part.
And I think the sixth, seventh and, sixth and seventh grades only just were released at the beginning of last school year for teachers to use. And only some of them at the beginning of the school year and they were rolled out as the year went on, so it's still very, it's new.
Yes, so like the entire curriculum wasn't even, like, someone like Rebecca in seventh grade sort of went out on the limb with us, trusted the process. But like, she didn't get her unit that she was teaching in the spring until November or probably, you know what I mean, like probably after that. And so understandably.
Sometimes a little closer.
Right, right, exactly, exactly. And like, so understandably, not everybody was, was ready to jump right on board at the beginning of last year.
Can I ask one more question? Is that allowed? And this, I guess, is going to be also, are we going to talk about wit and wisdom too?
We are.
Well, this is for both of the curriculums then, is like, how are this, how are these doing, supporting more our teachers and their instruction to build our students academic language skills and their discourse skills and, particularly for our MLs and like the, and students who are still developing their language proficiencies?
I don't want to put Terry on the spot, but Terry, do you notice like better like conversational skills between our students?
You know, just when, I, I think there's people that come in the room, just the, when they get together at the end of the unit and just discuss what has happened.
Socratic seminars.
Socratic seminars, they're amazing and they love them. And it's that conversational skills of taking everything they learned in a unit and sitting down and just discussing. And they just, you know, they make a plan, have a card, they all talk about it and it is everyone that's involved. I had a very high ELL and special ed class last year. And to hear them involved in those conversations and see how much they felt part of that group after learning it was really exciting for me. I mean, I remember thinking, oh, this isn't going to go well because there are just so many kids with needs in my class last year. But man, I was just really, and that, that Socratic seminar really does bring everything together, everything, they've, they talk about what they've written, all the other things they've done. And it really does say, wow, they did learn a lot more than you think. Because you know they complain about it all the time because that's just what kids do. But then when it comes down to it, you realize how much they love the content and what they're learning and how they're learning it. So it was really, I do see a change, I do see wit and wisdom when we first got it was like, but now as you see the growth in the kids and as you get them from other grade levels, it's really nice to see. You know, how much their, you know, their speech and everything is higher order. It's well past my bedtime, I'm just going to tell you.
So investigating history is something we still very much have in the pilot phase, along with wit and wisdom in grades six to eight. We're implementing wit and wisdom K to five. So I told you, we talked a little bit about wit and wisdom last spring. Where like a, at the North Andover Middle School, we are each grade level, grade six, seven and eight are each giving one unit a try or one module a try this year in wit and wisdom. So we've been able to get the materials, buy the text for those so that those teachers could, so at, so investigating history, grades three to seven, we're still very much in a pilot phase. And then wit and wisdom, six to eight, we're in a pilot phase. I feel like I'm further down on the agenda to talk to you about wit and wisdom K to five. So I think I will stop there, I don't want to go out of order. I want to thank my two brilliant teachers, I learn from them every day. And I want to thank them for being well, way up past their bedtime, well past their bedtime and even sick, like, super committed to coming. And so I am humbled by the fact that they did this for us, so thank you, my friends.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, now go to bed.
Thank you all, I appreciate it.
Okay, we are going to move on to our continued business. We have our second read on policy AC, the nondiscrimination and harassment policy. This was to bring it up to date with current laws, the changes were highlighted in red.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the new version of policy AC, the nondiscrimination and harassment policy as presented in the packet.
Second?
So any discussion?
I was just surprised that some of these things weren't already included, so.
Yes, seems like it was a needed update.
Yay.
All right, I will take a vote, Mr. Hicks.
Yes.
Mr. Moskovich?
Yeah.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Cormier?
Yes.
And I vote yes, that is approved. And then we have a slew of overnight trips that are seeking approval. We have, I don't know if we want to take these one by one or if we want to take them as a group. We have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, eight, because I believe the main robotics trip was already approved.
Yeah.
I have a question that applies to all of them, if you. So applying to all of these, especially after the conversation on the robotics trip, a couple of things kind of occurred to me around the quarry forms for chaperones. That for all of these, my, my question is, is does every chaper, is, is every chaperone and kind of with whatever the definition of a chaperone is, does every chaperone have an active quarry and who's confirmed, like, how does that get confirmed, what's the process around that?
So you'll see some of these are far, like, one of them is 2026, right? So yes, all of our chaperones, when chaperones are selected, do have to have an active quarry in order to participate in the trip. Our quarries are maintained by our school offices. So school offices will take the information, they collect the quarry form, they validate the ID. They send it here to central office after they validate that the person, you can't have a scan, you can't just send it in your child's backpack. You have to physically come in and look at the ID. They send it here, it takes us a couple of days turnaround and then there's a running doc that we have of people who are quarried. And then whenever there's a field trip or an event that's happening in the classroom, the teachers are responsible for submitting that list of parents or chaperones to the office. And then the principal and secretary will match it off of the main list. And if a parent wasn't on the list, then they would have to submit their quarry in order to be able to go. Quarries are good for three years and so we do ask that parents help us when they take their quarry. But again, those lists get submitted to the office and then the secretaries maintain that and they will say, you know, Ms. Cormier's up or she's coming up this year, you need to submit another quarry.
Okay, so why, not all of these, obviously, probably the chaperones aren't.
They may not even been selected yet, correct.
But before they go, there will be that validation process.
Correct, they were, yep, they're vetted, they have to send in their, their quarry list and then they're checked in the main office.
Okay, right, so was it HR checks to make sure?
HR, so they come here, so parents and families, whoever's volunteering and the schools can do it two ways. We do ask, the more efficient way is if they go to the school, they'll let the quarry form show their valid ID that's signed by the school official that gets sent here. We run the quarries here through central office. If for some reason a family member, you know, they're working, they can't get into the school office, we're open here till five, they can come here at five, Joanna or one, one of those of us that can, can take a quarry for them here. It takes about a couple of days for us to turn around. If, you know, if there was an error, if there was, if something came up with a concern, then either HR or myself would look at what the concern was. It may mean further conversation, some we can, we have jurisdiction to say that you can allow that still in the school. And others, we would have to call that person and say they're not allowed to volunteer in a school. Doesn't necessarily mean that they can't come to a school performance, but it means they can't volunteer in an opportunity where they would be alone with a child.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And if a parent, if a chaper, a field trip was going to happen and a teacher submitted the list and the parent wasn't on it, then we wouldn't be able to allow that parent to attend if we weren't able to, if we didn't have enough time to be able to turn around and get the quarry form in. And, you know, any family member can always go to, if they're unsure, they can always go to the main office or call the school secretary and ask them to check the master list and make sure like that they just want to be safe for that year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are these also being verified in schools for, say, like, mystery readers? I feel sometimes like that maybe they are just, they are taking their word for it, oh, yes, I'm quarried, these are being verified.
Yes and, and no, so you could technically have a mystery reader come in and read in the classroom because the teachers are in the classroom with the mystery reader. Uh, we ask that all people do have a quarry form, even if they're gonna come in for a mystery reader. But technically you wouldn't have to have a quarry to be able to come in and do a mystery reader.
And it says that classroom parties and things like, even though they're asked.
Classroom parties are a little different because you might be taking a small group of kids to run an activity, you know, we would want, if you're alone with a group of children, that is when you, it's most necessary to have a quarry form.
Okay, so for, so for every classroom party.
Those parents.
Those are supposed to be checked as well?
They, they should be. I mean, I guess it depends on what your party is. I mean, if you're sitting there painting a pumpkin, you maybe could get away with it. But I mean, I think err on the side of caution that we would quarry them and the same thing for a mystery reader. I mean, typically I used to say as a building principal, if you think you're gonna come into the school ever, if you're gonna put your foot in my school, please fill out a quarry form. It's not my school, but you know what I mean? That's sort of my air of caution. And I think as we look at other safety measures and I, what I meant, we'll talk about it at another time. I meant like we'll have another, a school committee meeting and, and parents have brought up some really good things in the last few weeks and, uh, last, in terms of emails. I think our students have rightly so said that they have concerns, they're feeling anxious at school. So I think we have a responsibility to address here some of what people are concerned about. And, you know, if there are things in our cor- quarry policy, we could look at changing. I mean, yes, it's every three years and that's what they ask us to do. It's a lot of work that goes through, um, but there are school systems that regardless of that rule, they ask families to do it every year. It's just the start of the school year, everybody does a quarry. And there are other measures at some point, whether or not the district wants to. I think one of the things we want to look at again is the safety report that we received last year. Mr. Landry is looking at that now as he's starting to think about capital improvements. So if there were recommendations in there, um, that might be something we could put on the capital improvement plan. So whether it's not, you need, um, better door systems, uh, you know, like a two-way door system. What I mean by that is like you can get in, but then there's like a, um, cubicle where you can't get into the next area of the school, right? Things like that, if we need to think about, there are systems where you can, um, where a parent, any kind of volunteer comes into the school, uh, like a lobby guard is one, where you can, you run their, um, driver's license or their passport through a machine. And the machine will verify if there is any, any concern. And, um, once it's verified, a label comes out and, and if the label comes out with a void on it, it means that there's something and you have that, that access right there to look on the computer to see. Sometimes it's just a name that can change. I mean, I've worked with those before, but I think there are some things that we're gonna want to look at.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Okay, do we wanna take these? Oh, I, I did wanna clarify also for our student representatives, just so they know, anytime there is an overnight field trip in which a student is going to miss school, it needs to be approved by the school committee. So that is what we are looking at, all the overnight field trips in which students are going to be missing school.
Are you going on any of these?
Not any of these. There's one that student council usually goes to the state conference.
In February.
That's in February. Is that, was that approved?
That hasn't been yet. And so I would suggest you talk to your student council advisor, make sure that you all wanna register for that. You, it comes to us.
We'll talk to Mr. Man.
And it, it takes two reads, like we, we can do it quick, but we usually have, get, we got these last time now, we've had time to think about them, we'll vote on them now, uh, today. But even if you think you're gonna do it, bring it forward to the committee, cause then you don't have to go if something happens, but you can't go unless we do it.
I have another question. So our council's also, oh, thank you. Our council is also looking for an opportunity to attend the national conference. This is the first year they're bringing it back. So how would we go about that?
Your, your advisor could submit the, like, we could do all the planning of like what that would look like and when and like how the cost of all that. And then they would submit the form on your behalf, the student council behalf to do it.
Okay, yeah.
To have it approved.
Madam Chair, so go ahead.
I'm, I'm sorry, I, I see, I think it's three international trips here and I'm just curious about the underlying equity of that. Like, you know, a trip to Nice, France, there have to be a large percentage of families that can't afford that. And I'm just wondering what our policy is about that.
So I believe there is on, what, I'm not sure.
It was in last time.
We didn't include the whole packet again, cause you had them last time, I'm sorry. So it was just the list. But typically on those sheets that you received last time, there's a question that says, um, how will, what if, is it cost prohibitive or how can students ask for, um, assistance, uh, financial assistance? So we typically go off of the same way we would for, if you were to have an assistance for a fee in the district. Or, uh, sometimes the club will raise extra money, um, to be able to support students who need, um, support in order to attend those trips.
But, but I mean, the amount of support you'd need for a trip to France is way more than going down to DC for a day or two.
Correct, but it's also students, so we know who is going to be, they, they sort of, um, will check in with students, how many are gonna perhaps participate? They give them prior notice, that's why you might have some of them, well, the Galapagos, is that the one that's a couple of years out? They start talking about it in the springtime with them before they go. But, um, we are committed to working with every student and every family if this is something they wanna attend and they need financial resources.
And each, each one includes an opportunity for scholarship, right?
Correct.
Just looking at one of them right now.
Correct.
They all have, in the form, they have to indicate, um, that's, have to indicate that students and families have been notified of possible LY, LEF scholarship opportunities.
Correct, so a lot of these trips, like these are organizations that help schools run these trips and they have scholarships embedded within the organizations as well.
Okay. I, I guess I'm just kinda surprised because we're, we're not talking trivial money now.
No, no.
Madam Chair, point of order.
Yes, please.
I guess point of order. When I was looking through these today to remind myself about them.
Yes.
All of the links in what's posted online that link to the PDFs that the, that describe the itinerary are dead. They're not working.
It's interesting you say that. I went and looked at something tonight too and I, mine was dead. I just thought maybe somebody was doing some work.
Yeah, you get that, right?
I got the same thing, yeah.
Oh, okay.
But we should make sure that's fixed.
Get fixed.
Madam Chair, um, may I suggest that we take these as one batch?
I would accept that.
Yeah, minus the robotics trip.
Does anybody have any objection to that?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the, um, overnight field trips for fiscal year twenty-five to Boston, Charlotte, Orlando, Ecuador, Nice, Orlando, again, Verdeca, uh, Spain and Washington DC.
Do I have a second?
It's just that Ecuador trip is twenty-two, six.
And, oh, and in, I'm sorry, Ecuador in twenty-twenty-six.
Thank you. I'll second that one.
All right, any further discussion? Okay, take a roll call vote. Mr. Hicks.
Yes.
Mr. Moskovich.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Ms. Cormier.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Those are approved. All right, and then we have a second read. We had some updates to the student handbook, an update on the non-discrimination and harassment policy, again, bringing it up to date.
Takes into consideration the new Title IX laws that were, um, enacted.
And this reflects the policy we just approved.
Correct.
And the new cellphone policy for an electronic device policy.
Correct, and now at the last meeting, um, I think Ms. Cormier noted that it had just the consequences noted, just cell phones. And now it's been added cell phones and other non-academic devices.
Where are you now?
I am on page fifty-six, fifty-seven. Last time it said first offense if the cellphone would be confiscated. Now it says the cellphone and other non-academic electronic devices.
And to recall, uh, Ms. Lathop, this was in particular to the middle.
Middle school.
Middle school only.
I could see some looks of shock on our students.
I was like longer with the law.
You haven't read this entire student handbook?
We will be reposting the student handbook to the website once this is approved. But the Title IX laws have changed and that's why these are part of it now.
Madam Chair.
Well, I'm sorry, you have a question though?
Yes.
So it doesn't actually say middle school here, right?
It's on the, uh, pages before, before it, the individual changes were just taken out. The pages preceding this are as to the middle school.
So you go page twenty-eight to fifty-six.
Okay, it's on page fifty-five.
Oh, thank you. Okay, got it, I see.
So question, was there any feedback that I didn't, wasn't any email at least that came to school committee? Was there any feedback on this? I did not receive any. Okay.
Nor did I.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the twenty-four, twenty-five student handbook.
I'm sorry, what are you moving?
To approve the twenty-four, twenty-five student handbook.
The whole thing?
Yeah, we have to.
So, so that includes the cellphone thing?
Yes.
Yes.
And so now what's changed is black and what's not changed in red?
Red represents the changes that we are, that are being made.
So we're, yes, we're accepting it as a whole document with the changes.
Most of it is red.
Correct.
Well, what, you got printed here as red?
What's printed, so you don't have the whole handbook in front of you, we just shared with you the.
The changes.
The changes.
Right, okay.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Right, any further discussion?
Curious, do we have an employee handbook?
We, well, I'll have to think of my districts. I don't know the answer to that. I don't remember seeing an employee handbook. We do have, we contracted with Arcs Ed this year and it is a, um, through HR and it is the, it's about an hour long and it is all of the policies. So it's the title nine policy, it's the harassment policy, it's bullying policy, it's, um, there's health, the, all the ones for, um, like Epi pens and health. And so it's a professional responsibility that our teachers and staff, all staff, watch that. And I think have to sign off on it at the end.
Okay, we got the emails still. Yeah, I, yes, we do.
Oh, okay.
I have to do that one.
I have to.
I thought it was because I was a coach, is it because I'm school committee that I'm getting that?
Yes. So we, so we had had a sort of homemade one, um, before, but this one is very comprehensive and is all up to date with all of the current laws. So we have gone with that this year.
We have that training, but it's something maybe to think about, right? Like as any organization this size, it's probably a good idea to have one. And, and I thought of it when I was looking at all these, looking at this, this afternoon, looking at all these changes. I'm like, you know, a lot of, cause a lot of the stuff that we added here is very relevant to staff.
And, and a lot is also in the, the CBAs, you know, you know, in their contracts, a lot of these things. But I think you're right, I mean, we can certainly look at that.
It's just something to consider.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
All right.
And then my other question, it, it wouldn't affect my vote, but I'm just curious that, do we have more than one compliance officer or one compliance officer? Who is it? Cause this makes a lot of reference to compliance officers if there's a complaint.
So typically there are officers within each of the schools. So lots of times the assistant principal would be designated as a compliance officer. Or the principal could be a compliance officer. In my previous employment, we had actual staff members who were appointed as the compliance officer.
For a building.
For a building.
Okay.
Correct. HR is always a.
So the default would, for the district would be, would be.
HR.
Uh, Greg Landry.
Mm-hmm.
Right, okay.
All right, any further questions?
I can find out more on that.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
All right, are we ready for a vote? Okay. Mr. Hicks.
Yes.
Mr. Moskovich.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Ms. Cormier.
Yes.
And I vote yes. That handbook is approved. Okay, we have new business, um, the wit and wisdoms grades K through five.
Correct, so, um, school committee should, um, formally adopt curriculum that we are, um, using in our school district. We have had lots of opportunities to share, um, the wit and wisdom program from pilot to implementation, lots of presentations. But, um, we have not, I haven't been able to look and find in prior, um, uh, minutes if it was ever formally adopted. We, this is our second year of full implementation K to five, if it was formally adopted by the school committee. And in compliance with many of these federal grants that we're applying for and even our own student opportunity, um, we just want to, uh, have a, on record that the school committee has formally adopted wit and wisdom. So Kristin can give you a quick overview again if you'd like, and then that's what we're looking for.
And we're happy with this curriculum?
And, and it was great to hear from the teachers and how the, that wit and wisdom is matching so nicely with the work that they're doing in investigating history.
What's that word?
It's very late.
Acronyms, like, so wit and wisdom was one of our choices for HQIM, high quality instructional materials. And so this just, this graphic shows our journey from twenty-twenty-one to now, our journey away from balanced literacy, more toward evidence-based, um, reading practices. And so there's lots of things that happened, but one thing that happened is adopting high quality instructional materials. And so, Mr. Hicks, you asked earlier about like why wit and wisdom. And so we came across the HQIM grant in, um, FY twenty-three. So I think it was like February of twenty-twenty-two, we applied for high quality instructional materials grant. The amounts are there, we were awarded, but we had four choice, we had three choices for high quality instructional materials in order to get this grant. So one was EL, one was wonders, and the other one was wit and wisdom. And so we narrowed our choices to those choices and hoping to get this pretty generous amount of funding. And the idea was that we had to have the materials onsite by June thirtieth and start with some work the next year. And so we chose wit and wisdom, um, I think EL, CQLA, the other material, high quality instructional materials all meet standards. Wit and wisdom doesn't have its own foundational skills component. So, um, actually teaching kids phonics and how to decode and encode words specifically, the other curricula had that component. We were very successfully using foundations as our foundational, we were using foundations as our foundational skills curriculum to teach phonics. It didn't make sense at the time to throw out something that was working well for us. We had data to support that kids were learning to decode and encode in order to then start something new. So wit and wisdom was one of the programs that could work with foundations in order to, um, meet those needs. And so it's a question of topics of the choices we were given from the DESE for the grant, it's just a question of topics. They're all high quality, I would have gone with all of them. Wit and wisdom was the best match for us because we already had a foundational skills component in place. So we had a committee of, um, teachers, administrators also review the other curriculums and, you know, what might have, other curriculums that met neat, that met standards. Um, and we landed on wit and wisdom. And so I'll tell you a little bit about the timeline in that twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two, the resources were explored, meaning we looked at everything that had met expectations according to ed reports in the DESE. In spring twenty-twenty-two, February twenty-twenty-two, we were awarded the first hundred sixty-one thousand dollars. So we established a leadership team, had some initial professional development. And we had a group of teachers that came on board to implement in twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three. So we had a group of our leadership team teachers and then we gave the rest of the teachers a choice. You could come on this year, you could come on next year, or you could come on eighteen months from now. And much to our delight and, um, a little bit of dismay, ninety percent of our teachers elected to just start. Once the materials were in the schools and they started looking at them, they were like, well, let's just do it. And so we didn't expect ninety percent of our teachers to come on board, but they did. So in our first pilot year, we had like almost all of our teachers doing that. Last year, we had everybody underway and we had like staggered the professional development. And so last, so this would be our, our second full year of implementation almost, because our first year, we meant it for it to be a pilot, but ninety percent of our teachers came on board. And then, um, in this year, we're using our FCIs, which is our current, um, teacher leader positions at the elementary school to help support other teachers in the building. And so what are, so in FY twenty-four, we got a continuation grant for two hundred and two thousand dollars to do the work that we were talking about, using the high quality instructional materials to then build scaffolds, activities, plans for students to better meet needs. And so, um, we've expended all of those funds and I think done a good job implementing, um, wit and wisdom. It's not perfect. There is no unicorn, what you're looking for is a strong horse. That's what they say in the curriculum world, that there is no unicorn, but if you have a strong horse, you can get where you need to go. And so, um, we see evidence in classrooms of, um, implementing, we have a common schedule this year that we've put in place to be sure to protect the time that wit and wisdom needs in order to, um, go through the curriculum. And like I, like we, I was explaining to you before, like it is a high quality instructional material that raises the bar for all kids. But especially those who are consistently marginalized in schools, students of color, poor students, students on IEPs. And so, uh, very proud of this effort, very proud of this rollout. I'm proud every time I see kids working on this material and I'm so happy that Terry was able to speak to that. And so.
And I'll just say for a short moment, we worked with, um, who was the company that worked? And I'll just say for a short moment, we worked with, who was the company that worked?
Rivet Education.
Rivet Education. So when you receive the grant, you're assigned a consultant that works with you. Rivet Education has so many wonderful things to say about North Andover, but in specifically Kristin Ando and her coaching team and the work that they have done. They are considered to be examples for the Commonwealth. They have been asked to have other school districts come here to see the work that has been done. They've been asked to go to other school districts to offer support. And really were just completely impressed with the rollout. They were very supportive. They had some feedback for us last year when I came on board. But really it was a tremendous effort by Kristin, led by Kristin Ando and her team of coaches and the, and the teacher leaders. And I think we talked about this once before. It really grew from teacher leaders and that's what we want to see happen. But I just, I know that Kristin would skip over that and I think it's really important to know how well known, how much the, the department and people like these instructional groups, Rivet, really found North Andover's implementation to be the correct way and are using it in models and lots of other places.
Thank you. We have an amazing team of teacher leaders here. All our strength is in the team. And so, and I, I can't help, I have to mention Jackie Taylor and Nicole Radeski are, and Jen Viterisi are literacy coaches. But we have a, we had a, we are, I feel like we have a very successful rollout and we have a very, and not without bumps, but we have a very successful rollout and kids doing really amazing things.
This process that we heard discussed about a half hour ago, it worked with Witten Wisdom. I mean, the, the same idea of the higher, high level, basic material and then the teachers spending their time figuring out how to individualize it for. But it, it works, I mean, that, that curriculum works with that approach?
Absolutely, yes. We have a little less funding for investigating. We have a little less funding for investigating history. And so we, you know, that, that, this was a pretty large scale effort. We had a lot of support behind it. But absolutely this idea that like we have these, we have a group of teacher leaders who are willing, like Rebecca and Terry, who are willing to be out front, but also support their peers and help scaffold the materials for students. Absolutely. That would go for all of our high quali, you're going to hear a lot about high quality instructional materials from me. Like this, this process would apply to new math curricula, to, you know what I mean? To, to any high quality instructional material.
So I'm, I'm thinking that probably there's nobody out marking low quality instructional material.
Oh, there are.
How does someone establish themselves as being high quality?
So you get, so two ways. So Ed Reports is, is an organization that's like Consumer Reports, but for educational materials. But then Massachusetts developed their own curriculum vetting system called Curate, where they vet through, with Massachusetts teachers, vet high quality instructional materials. So, oh, no, the low instruct, the low quality instructional materials are still out there. Right, right?
And some pretty well-known names are not high quality.
They do this by paying teachers for the summer to come in and work? And teacher, teachers apply, they, and then DSE selects them and?
Absolutely. We have a few teachers on staff serving on the committees. Mm-hmm. Yeah, it stands for curriculum ratings by teachers. So Curate, that's, so that's Massachusetts version of Ed Reports. And you can see like a screenshot of like, that's how they rated Witten Wisdom, like overall, you know, meeting expectations. And so this data also gives us as a district, accessibility for students was something that we were most, that the program was mostly meeting expectations. We knew that was a place where we had to fortify the curriculum. So that's exactly what we did. We used that information to do that. Again, no curricula is perfect. We need, you know, but we think it's a strong horse.
Do us the, most of the staff that's using it, our, our thumbs up on it? I mean, are you getting that kind of feedback too?
Mm-hmm. Absolutely, yes. We visited classes, I visited classes today where the lessons were underway. So absolutely. Again, I think we'd get the same feedback that it's challenging and it's different. And balanced literacy, the curriculum we used before was very loose in that you could pick whatever you wanted to do. And that's good and that's bad, right? And so, but it is, it's high rigor. What I'm hearing this year more than I heard last year was that as students, of course, the curricula builds on itself too. And so students have now been exposed to an entire year of it. So a student who has had the curriculum in second grade is more prepared for third grade than the third grader who didn't have the curriculum the year before was. So we only anticipate that those level, that, that level of rigor will be able to go up.
So as you say this, I'm thinking about, I got interested in Core Knowledge at one point. Even went down and visited them. And, and of course, basically that, that, at the heart of that is the idea that you have to learn this sequentially. And you want a curriculum that builds over years, just as, as you were describing.
Absolutely. I rolled out Core Knowledge in my school in Lawrence as a principal. Again, like Core Knowledge, EL, Witten Wisdom, like they're all great choices. We went with this one because it happened to fit best with what we were currently doing. All good choices.
Couple of questions about funding. What's the year-over-year cost of maintaining Witten Wisdom now?
It is about, because our teachers have written the materials, so the.
Have all the things.
I can get the absolute numbers for you, but I can estimate them for here. The, we have to pay for a digital license for like, for the idea that teachers access this curriculum for the most part, online. We have hard copies. Most people don't use them. That runs about $25,000. And then to actually print the materials to hand to teachers to use with students, student workbook, student work pages, that's about $60,000 in order to do that printing.
But you'd have some of that cost anyway, right? No matter what you used.
No matter what.
No matter what.
We'd have that cost, yeah. And it's in.
Yes.
It's in there, yes.
Kelly Cormier asked if that was in the budget and I just said yes.
And that's not that bad of a number. Also, so we're piloting in K-5 and we'll do a, a vote on it next time. Oh, sorry. We're implementing K-5, we're going to vote on that next time, but we're piloting six and middle, middle school. Since we're piloting, will we, in terms of adopting that, will be, are there going, are, do you know if there's grants coming from DSE for HQIM implementation grants coming this year that we'll be able to apply and have some funding for? Would that be something that we could also apply for, for investigating history to fund some of those things?
So I have received an investigating history grant. It's not large this year, about $32,000.
And that's mostly for printing?
Mostly for like printing and some PD, hopefully some teacher stipends as well. There isn't a lot of additional grant funding on the horizon for middle school. There's K to three PRISM funding like on the horizon, but not so much for middle school. We would have to make a plan if we wanted to adopt six to eight. And I think we have more work to do with teachers and, you know, groups around that. We would have to problem solve around a funding source.
Just remember for a new adoption, you can put that into the capital, capital funds.
For one year.
For one year.
To do like the big stuff and then you can put into the operating budget, the year-over-year cost of the digital licenses and make it more reasonable.
Mm-hmm.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this? This, I mean, this has been, we're in the second year of practice on this. This just, we're, we're proving this as a formality because it hasn't been approved. Do we want to entertain suspending the rules?
All right, I'll make a motion to suspend the rules. Suspend our practices, I guess is the right term. I'll second.
Is there any discussion on that?
I think it's actually important that we do it.
Okay. I'll take a roll call vote. Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Mr. Moskovich?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Cormier? And I vote yes.
And now I'll make a motion to adopt, to formally adopt Witten Wisdom, K to five. Thank you.
All right. Any discussion?
I, I love that it's a knowledge building sequence for kids and recognizing that it's not foundational and we still invest in the foundational skills in other ways is important. But I think this is a really good move for our kiddos. Continue to think it's a really good move for our kiddos.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Mr. Moskovich?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Cormier?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other public comment? Seeing none. Our next meeting is Thursday, September 26th. I'll ask my committee members if there's anything specific they'd like to see on the agenda for next week. You're welcome to let me know, email me. We'd like to hear your voices and things that are important to you.
Move to adjourn. Second.
Any discussion?
Not allowed.
Can't discuss.
Okay. Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Mr. Moskovich? Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Cormier?
Yes.
And I vote yes. We are adjourned.